Go ahead and get started. Good morning, everybody. The day is Wednesday, August 11th. Time is 9:01 a.m. The second day of our 2021-2022 budget retreat for Farmers Branch City Council. We can go ahead and call meeting to order. First on the agenda, we have major compensation study results. So Brian, we can go ahead and get started. And just so you know, we have Councilmember Merritt and Mayor Robert Dye on the line and present. So we'll be calling on them during Q and A. Please feel free to reach out if you have any questions. Brian, floor yours.
Good morning. Brian Beasley, Director of Human Resources for our new council folks. Wanted to walk you through basically the compensation study, but just our philosophy as a general rule, and just go through some high-level definitions as well, so we're talking on the same page. Just to remind folks, we have three types of structures. We have merit pay and step pay. Merit pay is a pay line established and movement through the line is solely on your performance. And then we have step plans that are on an annualized basis. So what happens there is they're tied to the marketplace. However, everybody on an annualized basis receives their increase year over year until they hit their top-out level of pay. So we're going to be talking a lot about step and merit, and those get confusing, especially for our employees. Sometimes they get confused with it as well, so I wanted to be really clear for the council folks. For step increases, structure adjustments happen immediately. So when we approve the budget, when you all approve the budget and October 1 comes, that very first pay period in October, our public safety folks who are on step increases will receive that increase. For merit, that's not the case. We do a focal review is what we're moving to, which means we will do performance management the month of January through February. And then in April, we'll see merit increases based on their performance. At that point, whatever the merit budget is set, we're recommending right now 4%. Someone could receive a zero, someone could receive 4%. So it's not an automatic like it is with step. We do have, I mentioned, the three salary structures. We have the general employees, which are merit-based employees. Most of the folks in the room with you are merit-based folks. We have the fire step program and the police step program, all market-based. So when we do the major compensation studies, we tie those individual rates and starting rates to the market and then build our structure from there. I did want to let council know that every single year HR does a review of our compensation structure. By charter, we do a deep dive every five years, and we use an outside third-party company to do that, which we usually put out to bid. Last five years ago, we did the comp study with Evergreen Solutions. This year, we also chose Evergreen Solutions. They were very familiar with our pay structure and pay philosophy, and they were familiar with our peer group, and so they were able to easily assess that data and bring it back to us. So, but I did want y'all to be aware, every year I look at bench front jobs, I look at PD and I look at fire throughout our peer cities to make structure adjustments in need. What the deep dive does is it not only gives us the pay line, which is basically start pays and end pays, but it does give us also what certification pays are, what ad pays are, what our benefit levels are. So it goes a much deeper dive than what I do on an annualized basis. Want to let you all know who we consider to be our peer group cities. I don't think anything would surprise you all. We did add this year South Lake, Prosper, and Solana because those are cities that are growing competitively with us, and we have folks that may be looking in those arenas. Most of our employees do not live in the Farmers Branch area. Most of them drive in. So there's not a cost of living differential that's applied. We are the metro plus Y that we compete against. So these are the group of cities that we look at.
Brian, you might mention, because some people might go, well, my gosh, Plano and Irving, they have a larger population.
Sure.
I think that the reason that they're peers is when we're competing for employees, our employees will look at those cities.
That's absolutely the case.
Totally agree that we're not the size and character of Palomar or Plano or Irving or Dallas.
That's correct.
But these are folks that we're hiring against.
That's correct. And not only do we hire against them, but we also hire from them. So.
So I'm just curious, Evergreen is the company that you use?
Yes, sir.
How many other cities do they do?
They, I don't have that list off the top of my head, but they, it's a national-based company, and they've done multiple cities in the metroplex area.
Okay. So would it not be to our advantage to try to get somebody else? So we're not getting the same information that everybody else is getting, or we're getting it differently, or maybe a fresher approach? Because I'm not, I don't know. If they're doing 10 other cities, it's real easy for them to just sort of, I would think, I'm not going to say fudge numbers, but maybe we're not getting a truly unbiased presentation.
Well, the other shit, that's the whole reason that we use a third-party company, so it's unbiased, right? And data is the data. So, and quite frankly, all of these cities will post their data right on the website. So the way that I do my surveys, because I've done compensation for 28 years now, that's actually my background before I came to the city. The way I do it is I go to their websites and I contact their HR directors and I ask for their pay lines and all their information. That's exactly what these cities do, and then they provide, I mean, that's what this company does, and provides it back. The only thing that helps them is they do it, if we wanted to, but we don't compare ourselves to. They can share other cities and other geographical locations with us. We don't look at that, so it doesn't matter. But I can validate their numbers because I can go directly to these folks' HR directors, and I can go directly to their websites and look, does it say that it pays $50,000? Yes, it says it pays $50,000. So I can't, they're not able to post the numbers whatsoever. And that's the only reason that we employ them is one, our city charter says that we will use an outside company so that employees don't feel like either HR is pushing a certain direction, which, as I've stated many other times, I'm an employee too. I want the best for employees. I want the best for our taxpayers. So there's got to be a balance in there to do the right thing. But there'd really be no reason, Councilman Lynn, for them to push something wrong.
Well, okay, so if they're giving everybody the same information and everybody says, well, we're going to adjust our salaries 4%, then the whole market's just moving and we haven't gained maybe any ground. The employees are gaining ground, but the city in terms of having an advantage, whether if we decided that we wanted to offer more
Sure.
to attract better talent.
Sure.
We're just going to be in line with everybody else.
So six years ago, this body decided to utilize the market data that Evergreen provided and approved a 5% above median market. So what that means is, and there's some differences in language. If you're a comp person, you could argue that that's called the 55th percentile of the pay range. Thinking 5% above, right? Mathematically, that's not how it's actually done, right? Because what that does is if that pay line was $50,000, that point was $50,000, then 50%, what, when you say 55th percentile, that means 45% of the companies pay less than that. 45 cities, 45% of the cities pay less than that. That can mean it's $50,200. So it's not truly a 5%. What you all approved was truly a mathematical 5% above market, so therefore that $50,000 would now be 55. We set our pay line today, along with y'all's approval, to continue that. That's what gives us our competitive advantage. So we take their data and then we set that, and they do it for us. So I'm not, I do it every year, but they do it on the five-year schematic of moving that to the 5% above market.
And Councilman, unlike the private sector, you know, salaries are pretty confidential.
They're private.
They're private. In the government arena, they're public. And I meet once a year with other city managers, and we just had this meeting, what, two weeks ago, John Lynn as well? And we kind of talk about budget proposals and what people are doing salary-wise. And believe me, the issue of police and fire, you know, is, you know, that would be, that kind of meeting would be illegal in the private sector because you're kind of colluding to some extent. You're kind of going, oh, don't do that because we're all going to have to do that. And the city managers, they recognize that, you know, if they're going to go up significantly, especially on police right now, because it's hard to hire a police officer, and what Dallas is just, we're going to hire 250 next year. So it's a tough market. And so, yeah, it'd be wonderful if we could keep something secret that was, you know, that we have better in terms of salary offerings than someone else. But in the public arena, we really don't have that capability. But it's, you know, the other factor here is Brian just mentioned, where that five, the philosophy is 5% above the median or the average. I think it's actually the average.
Average.
But the, Plano has that same philosophy. The only issue is their peer group cities aren't those. Their peer group cities are Chicago and Philadelphia and New York and LA. And so all of a sudden, you know, that's why I've said many times that, you know, if we just had, I don't know, it was maybe a year or two ago, I think Anna at the time said, well, let's just adopt what Plano has done. And I'm like, well, you're, that, we're not Plano. We can't afford to be like Plano because they have a philosophy that is a target we just can't reach. Though we're competing against them, we have to acknowledge that, but we're just, they're in a different realm. And so it's just, it's a difficult, a difficult scenario. And when you're in a hot market, and what you're going to see here shortly with police is, I mean, they're being recommended for a significant change. And, you know, starting salaries are going to go from mid-60s to low-70s with an upper range close to mid-90s. That's, and when you're talking about police and fire, half of our employees, I mean, all of a sudden, it's expensive. And I think we all acknowledge we have to have a police officer, but market conditions right now are very tough. So anyway, I don't know if that helps, but I kind of want to give you a little bit wider.
Yeah, and I would tell you, much to what Charles said, in the private sector, it's called wage fixing. It's actually illegal to do exactly what we do. You have to use a third-party company. You have to, you only are benchmarking against, say, non-herbal goods manufacturing with sales at $500 million to $1 billion. And then you know the companies that are participating in that survey. So you might know that there's, you know, you have Goodridge or whatever the companies are, but you don't know what their data set is. They just give you the averages, and that's how you set your pay lines. Our transparency, one, it took me a little bit to get used to because I'm from the private sector, but our transparency is off the charts because you literally post everything that you have and you see that. And so it does, on one hand, you could set wages. On the other hand, the market's driving the fact that people are going to be moving through. And I think you'll be pleased with, yes, we're making some recommendations, especially for police and fire, but we still stay really competitive. We tend to take out, as do all comp people, they tend to take out the very high and very low hours. And that's how we're coming up with that pay line. I do the same. That's just a normal philosophy of doing the math. But even when we do that, you'll see, Councilman Lynn, that we stay very competitive to Plano. We're just not at that top end. We don't start there, they're starting, we don't end it there, any, but we're still within that bracket. And we're not losing a lot of folks to Plano, quite honestly. So that's, you know, that's also part of what makes it, you have to look at, that we do compete very well with them. So.
If I could just add a point, it kind of ties in with your point, Terry, and also what you were saying. I mean, we all know, you know, what we've been living through the last few years, and this is a national issue and a national challenge. Every police department, I think, you know, large, small, big cities, they're all working to retain their public service officers, especially police, also fire in many places. And I don't think it's just salary that, as in the private sector, that people move for, or join a company, or in our case, join a city. I think people move for many, many reasons. And just like corporations, you know, cities have reputations, they have cultures. Things change. They have leadership, management, that's good, bad, and in between.
That's absolutely right.
And things fluctuate. And, you know, people will move for many reasons. So, and Chief Hale was just telling me this morning, I asked him kind of, you know, and he said he just lost an officer that went to another city for personal reasons. And so from what I know, and I'm New Haven Council, I think we're very competitive. And, you know, and I hear all the time from people all over the metroplex and out of the metroplex, what's going on in Farmers Branch and, you know, how we're growing, we're changing, you know, not just we're adding houses and people, but just all the dynamic changes that we've got going on in the city and all of our amenities. And I think, you know, from what I've heard, it's an attractive place for, you know, staff as well.
I would completely concur, Councilman. I think the support that you all give to not only public safety, but to employees is very important. It sets a culture. We manage a culture. HR is in charge of it along with city management. But we manage that culture, but without y'all, also steering that ship through react, through respect, excellence, accountability, care, and trust. Without those things, we're not a place to work at that people want to work at. With those things, obviously, we are, and we don't have a higher rate of turnover for the bad ones. We have personal reasons that we're leaving, some that just want to get out of the profession as a whole. Chief Hale would probably speak to that if he hasn't already, and I understand that. The nice thing is that here, public safety as a whole has great support from HR, from city management, and from council. And that's not the case everywhere.
Right.
I think that gives us also competitive advantage too. So as part of this process, again, really transparent, it took me quite a while to come up this speed from the private sector to the public sector because compensation is done in a vacuum in the private sector. My office would do it, we made recommendations, leadership would approve it, and then that's what employees got. And there was, you didn't get to negotiate or talk about it or see it. Here, we actually have a committee that we have formed. Each of the major construct studies that we do, we put together a committee. These are the folks that participated this year. For fire and police, we have two folks, and that's predominantly because of shifts that can't always be there at the same time. So, but fortunately, we've had, the meetings that we've had, both participants on both PD and fire have been able to be there. We have representatives from Park and Rec, community services, public works, planning, economic development, all of our major departments, so are all represented. And then I represent the rest of the community as a whole. So what these folks get to do, that there's some criteria, I didn't put that in there, I did for them. They don't come in and make recommendations for pay lines because they're not comp people. We leave that to Evergreen to bring forth. What they do get to do is go back and take back the information to other employees, get questions from other employees, hey, they look at this. One of the bigger things that we get from fire a lot, from the two folks that represent them, was, hey, some cities don't run ambulances. We run ambulances. Does that make a difference? And the answer is yes, it does. So in the comp data, Evergreen breaks that out and provides that. Now, what they provide to me and to the liaisons is the averages. They're not giving me necessarily, this is what Plano specifically does, this is, I can ask for that, and I have on some pay lines, but not necessarily for some of the differences that they have. But they get to see that and make recommendations back to city management, and then we bring that forward to you all. So they're getting to participate at a high level, ask detailed questions, hey, what about surpays? How are surpays treated differently? What about TMS? I know TMS will be brought up here. It's not on my slide deck, but any questions that you all might have, because we're a 25-year city versus a 20-year city. And what does that mean? So we walk them through that, we walk them through the data, and then they kind of become the ambassadors, both to city management and back to the employees to ask and get answers for questions. So we're very transparent on how we do this, more so than I've seen anywhere else. But again, I come from the private sector, so that's probably not a great example. Process overview, so what we provide to the consultants is we provide all the city structures, all the job descriptions, because they have to actually compare job descriptions. As an example, some police forces don't have corporals. We have corporals. So, but there's a body of work that happens under the corporal that happens elsewhere. So we have to make sure they're matching apples to apples, and they go through that due diligence and do that. When I'm doing that, I do it at a very high level. They do it in a very deep dive because I'm the person I don't have a band with, with other things. But when they do it, they're looking specifically, do they do this 20% of the time, 15% of the time? That's how they're going to do that mechanism. Then we provide all the salary and wage data, so that would include ad pays, surpays, language pay, all those different little things that add up to their baseline. And then all benefit information, which is very unique because nobody does benefits exactly the same. Most cities offer more than one plan. We offer one plan, so you have to compare that. I will tell you, especially for our new council members, we're the only city in the state of Texas that has gone nine years flat, beating medical inflation for not only the taxpayer, but also for the employees. We have not raised medical rates for employees or for the city. And we're the only one in the state of Texas that's been able to accomplish that. And that's.
I'm sorry, Brian, could you repeat that? The audio is a little challenged for me remotely, and I apologize for that. But if you could just repeat the individuality of what we are compared to the rest of the state?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. No, no problem. We're the only city in, at least in the United Healthcare Book of Business, because that's the only one I'm truly aware of. In that book of business, we're the only city in the state of Texas that has gone nine consecutive years without an increase to taxpayers or an increase to employees on the medical side. So we have beat medical inflation year over year for the past nine years, which is unheard of. So.
Yeah, that's true. Thank you. Appreciate that detail.
Yes, sir. Then our consultants, they solicit, as I talked about, the other cities, they gather the data, they pull total compensation data. That total compensation data is benefits, ad pays, surpays, and end base pay. They review the jobs with us to make sure, like, why are there differences? And so this year, there was a little bit less of that because they are familiar with our jobs and they didn't need to go into all the detail. But on certain jobs, especially new jobs, they had to come back and say, why is this different from the other cities that we're looking at? And we can tell them why, you know, what that individual does or those individuals do compared to the other cities. And then we have question-and-answer sessions with the liaisons, so they are able to ask questions to the consultants directly. I'm in the room too, but they're asking directly, not just through me. And then we review all data sets, or they review all data sets and then compile the recommendations. So where we're at today is they've made an overarching, because we have to have, they're all behind because of COVID. So we didn't have the data set early on. We needed a data set for the budget process, which I did for Sherrell and Charles on my preliminary data. Came back, and like I said, I've done this for a lot of years, so I'm fairly accurate within a half percent. And that's what it was. When they came back, they still haven't provided me every job, every detail, but they've given us, here's what jobs are running, and here's what we're going to make recommendations for, which gave us the budget number for you all. So we know, we're now solidified there. I have yet to see the benefits information. I've seen some overarching benefits information, and I've seen the holiday data and the time off data, which we just got. So I'll be sharing that with the liaisons after this meeting, so they're not hearing something new because I knew that was coming, but they'll get more detailed there. So what we know today, what was very interesting is, and for council, you all know this, we're one of the few cities that during COVID, we did not do layoffs. We kept people employed. And there was, it was for a very specific reason, two reasons. One is that we, by law, we were going to be paying 75% of their salaries. That was the act that was enacted for the emergency, and so we were going to be paying them anyways. We chose to keep them fully employed, pay them either 100%, but also give service to our citizens. So that was the way that we went. Other cities did do layoffs. When they came back, however, because I'm in contact with my peers, they came back and several cities did immediate increases. What they're basically trying to do is catch people up for the period that they're on and try to make that up to them. We did not do that. So we did not raise structures. We left things, everything flat because we had people employed. There was not, at that time, no reason to do so. We did not do a merit increase for any merit people in 2020. We did do some promotions, so there were some increases in promotions. And we did our step increases, so PD and fire did receive their increases. Yes, sir. I see your question.
So, Charles, I remember having this conversation with you and asking if we had had reductions in staff. And there were part-time positions that were not, I'm just, I want to make sure I'm understanding correctly.
They weren't filled.
They weren't filled.
Yes.
A lot, like the lifeguards, for example.
Right, right.
Or any of the.
There were 27 positions, by the way.
There are a lot of seasonal jobs.
So we did, those weren't filled, but we didn't lay off
Correct.
Correct.
in addition to that. Okay. That's, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, they were just simply, for the ones that we don't fill, then the taxpayers are not obligated to pay anything by the law.
Yeah.
And for the ones that are filled, we are obligated to do so.
And if I remember right, we had a few full-time positions that we froze.
We did.
Just to see, especially on the, especially on the hotel motel fund at a level. We froze it just to see how things
Yeah.
were going to evolve.
And to be fair, we did, so it wasn't part of COVID, so that, sorry. To be fair, we had three positions that we eliminated that really had nothing to do with COVID. They were reorganizations. So, and that happened kind of at the same time about, I'll be, if I remember right, two months prior to COVID becoming COVID. So we did have some true downsizing, but not for that reason.
Thank you.
Okay. So then here's what the recommendations have come back at. Merit structures will move up 2%. And I'm going to, I'll go through what that means here in a second. I noticed, because we're trying to hire against them, March's team, Shane's team, all of our direct labor, obviously, police and fire are always on the tops of our minds. Very competitive market out there, and we do have folks, like on March's team, that could literally jump up seven, eight bucks an hour to go to work for the I-35 project, which is no different than their commute because it's on I-35 right there by us. And so I've noted for the last six months that we're probably going to see an increase for those wages because direct labor is becoming so high. And you can see it where I'll give you kind of a fun example, which is positive for me. My son is now working for Buc-E's. He's making $17 an hour. That's, that's unfair, right? It's just that kind of, that's hard to compete against with direct labor. So we made recommendations to move up direct labor. Fire steps move up at 6% and police steps move up at 7%. I want to be really clear what that means. We set our structures for police and fire because they are a step organization and everything cascades from there. So that's our beginning officers and our beginning firefighters. That does not mean that a lieutenant necessarily in either gets a six or a seven. Typically, that's smaller. I don't remember off the top of my head what it is. I think it's a four. But that, and you're welcome to have that data. The liaisons already do have that data. That's how we set the structures, so 6% and 7% for our public safety. Any questions? And I just want to kind of give you, oh, I did put in a marketplace and team. This gives you a little deep, more deep dive for public safety. The liaisons have been made aware, so my assumption is, because that was their role, that they would communicate that out to the employees as well. So here's the recommendations. Firefighters, 6%, a driver, a four and a half, an LT, a four and a half, et cetera. I won't read those to you, but you can see how those structures move. And I just wanted to remind you, step increases implemented on the first day, which means they get that first pay period in October. And merit structures do not actually increase salaries. They only increase their opportunity in the range. And that's a big difference. Like our firefighters constantly tell us, our police officers constantly tell us, well, you all get a 4% increase, or you get a 3%, whatever the merit was, and that's absolutely wrong. That's false. Not true at all, because we don't. We get the opportunity to get a three or four, but some people are getting zeros. Some people may get a five, and that's how that works because it's all performance-based. And then this is, I think, Councilman Lynn will help you see, especially around some of our key competitors or people that are far outliers, this is starter rate. This is start rates for public safety, both police and fire. And it compares us with the new. And I'm showing you the old. The old is the start and how we count it up. You can see where, at the start, we're still high as far as relatively competitive with our market, but there's other cities that have started to edge us out. And then when we moved up with this recommendation, now we have Allen. Allen was an extreme outlier. And we have Plano and McKee. So the majority of our cities, we benchmark it as 21 cities, we are set higher than that level at start rates, or, or equivalent. And so the recommendation for a start rate for a new police officer is $70,200, rounding things to 18. And then for firefighter is $68,900.
Brian, quick question, just to clarify the data. This is predicated on last year's peer group numbers, not this year's peer group numbers?
No, sir. This is actually live data. This is what was pulled in the last three months.
Very good. Thank you. You clarified. That's, that's good to know. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So have the police and fire liaisons, are they on board with this, or are they taking this information back to their-
They're taking this information back to, to their groups, yes. And what I will note is, is in the step structure, most of the structures are four and a half, so each step moves up roughly four and a half percent. Which is clearly better than a merit, because we don't typically have 4% merits. Every once in a while, we do, if the market says so. But most time, we're, we're three and a half. And that's been across the country for 20 years. You typically see a 3% to 4% merit budget. Doesn't matter whether you're in public or private, that's what they normally are. And that's a lot of years of doing comp. So, but our steps actually get moved through quicker. So in some cases, you may see somebody getting, on the step plan, you may see them getting a 9% increase. Because they got the adjustment and they either step up and move forward that four and a half, so, going compounded, et cetera. I think that's it. Ask if you guys have any questions.
Brian, David Merritt again.
Yes, sir.
Quick question. So going back to the slide, we're just looking at the comparison of relatively recent data and where we will be positioned. Does that put us in the, the top third quarter, not quarter, out of the third tranche, if you will? It's very difficult against our peer groups to see, you know, are we number seven out of this, I don't know, 18 groups?
Sure.
What, what is our position numerically? That's a silly question, but it's just to understand where we're at.
Sure. Not, not at all. I don't think that's a silly question at all. I will have to go back and look at how many cities are above us. I could briefly do that, but I don't have my glasses, to be honest.
That's fine.
But, but I will tell you, I will tell you that it does put us basically about 90th percentile, so we're in that top 10% of cities in the metro flags and pay-wise. And that's, that is how we set the range. So there's very few cities that are starting rates higher than us or have top-out rates that are, that are higher than us.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
And I will do that and let the council know what, what, what number we fall at. Absolutely.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
What positions, and you had a slide that showed, yeah, are really considered management versus maybe the-
Sure.
Businessary.
Versus line officer or line firefighter.
Right, right, sure.
So really, you start to leave people at corporal for, for police. You start to have a people reporting to you. And, and of course, it gets larger as, as you move up. For firefighters, it's the LT. Please correct me if I'm misspeaking, I believe so. So here, from here down, these are, these are people, people. And from here down. Our largest group of, of employees, though, by far, is firefighter, police officer, those combined. Our majority of our, some line, line officers, line firefighters.
So I'm just going to go on record, I've been on record for five years saying this philosophically. You know, our residents are paying police and fire. This is the security, this is the insurance that we pay for with our taxes, as well as roads and other stuff.
Sure. That's why you get four minute response times and-
Yes. And so making sure that we have a fully staffed department with police officers. People driving on the street, you know, those guys that are stuffing bad guys and whatnot every day. That's real important to the residents that I talk to.
Right.
And so we want to make sure that we're doing whatever we have to in order to, one, be maybe more competitive.
Correct.
And be fully staffed, if that's even a possibility.
Right.
So, but, you know, I take, I take it really seriously. And so I'm, I'm, if you look at, by the way, at a concern level, I'm more concerned with police officers than I am with management.
Sure.
So to speak.
Yeah.
And that's not to say that I'm not concerned with them, but I want to make sure that we're fully staffed on the street.
So here's, here's an aha moment, things and errors that you all have, but, so that, especially for our newcomers, how you see this body actually directs the work of the city. A year ago, Chief Health and, actually, Chief Parker and I stood up here and requested seven additional officers at the time. Knowing that it takes 18 months to get them through training. That was the knock. Right? So one of the reasons that we are significantly down in our workforce for Chief Health is because we can't fill those bodies fast enough, because that takes an enormous amount of time of training and enormous amount of time of recruiting. And that was a understanding budgetary insight, but that was one of the things that, where this body could have said, yes, go ahead and start. We would now have seven officers, or at least five, trying to bridge that gap. So those are the kind of things that certainly with y'all's direction, then we can better take that, that mark. Because what's happening right now, not only is it bad nationwide with the, with the culture of anti-police. It's usually not for firefighters, because they're, you know, saving everybody. In people's minds. So are police, by the way, too. But we don't have that culture. Right? And you, you all support police, police and fire. And I believe our citizens, clearly by council meetings and, and our city management, support police and fire. So I don't think they have that issue, but there's still that, oh my gosh, there's a lot of drama around these roles. It's a high-stress role. But when you take out people that are out from military league, that are deployed, that just get sick or get COVID, we're 13 bodies down in PD. We've run about seven, eight since I've been here. So for nine years now, we've run about seven, eight down. So we're, we're a very lean city. And I don't mean that, you can go look. We're a very lean city, employee-wise, and we certainly are on, on police and fire, so.
But that being down, that takes a toll on everybody else, because they're having to make it up. And so it's a physical toll. It's a, it's a mental toll. And that's, that is a huge interest to me in trying to remedy that, because it's not fair. I don't believe it's fair to those people, number one. It's certainly not fair for us to expect that day in and day out of, of those that are serving us.
And I always use the word equitable, because what's fair to you is maybe not considered fair to them. It's not equitable to them.
Sure.
And I 1,000% agree. Chief Health agrees. We're doing things in the fire force to, to rectify that as well. We continue with the streets department, the utilities department, because we can't get first bodies either. I have a facilities technician role that's been open for nine months. Because people can make more money sitting at home, getting unemployment, or about $10,000 less. And so there's some folks that'd rather might be at home than to come to work. And, and we demand a lot. And that's, and you all demand a lot, we should. And so that's, we're, we're looking at that all the time. But those kind of things of, if we, if we do come to you and ask you for headcount, those are the things you think about, especially long-term, how it takes to ramp these folks up, because it does take time to ramp a firefighter and police officer up.
And Brian, I would just, and Terry, I'm glad you said that. I would echo that. And I think I can speak freely for everybody that on council that, we know police, I think for all of us, police and fire is very important. And I think it's something that we all feel has been a strain on our community because of everything that's going on, because we've heard of the, of the officers, us being down on officers and whatnot. And I think that, you know, the budget is the budget. But I do feel like, you know, five years ago, I would have never known that it takes almost two years to have a fire, you know, a police officer have to go through training to be able to do this. And I think being able to educate, especially our newer council, that may not know that. And, and for us to ensure that we have all of the background and education to make sure we make the best decisions. You know, one thing too, is, is I think we need to challenge ourselves to be a little more innovative when it comes to ways that we can offset the work of some of our police officers. And that's a conversation that I think we need to have with our chiefs. And, and I think it should be with council and not, you know, I, I love our city managers, but maybe sitting down, having our chief sit down with council and talk about the things that are happening, the things that are seeing, they're seeing, and share with us things that maybe other cities are doing. I know one thing that most recently, we've been working on is, you know, news, innovative approach is adding, you know, some, some certain elements to new apartments that are coming on, making sure they have certain security, certain lighting, because I know apartments now, I know on the west side in my district, there's been higher crime. So how can we be innovative to use, to spend some of our budget on long-term items that could relieve some of the strain of our officers and whatnot? And because I know that response time is, is something that we, we focus on, something that I think our city prides itself on. And we don't want that to change based on some of the decisions that that we, we have or have not made. And so how can we help, you know, our chiefs and our department with the work that they're doing to ensure that they're not, you know, working extra, ensure that their mental health is intact? I do, you know, and I, I think I, I ask this of, of the chief and of the other chief, you know, are we adding more officers to the budget? What can we do to help offset that? Because I think at this point, with our growing, our going, our growing population, that is a priority. And I think it's a priority for all of us. If I'm not mistaken, I think I can, I can, you know, speak to the entire council. But anyhow, I, I think that maybe one of our next steps can be to have that conversation with our chiefs, figure out, you know, aside from, from adding off, adding personnel, because I know we need that, and we need that sooner rather than later. But what are other areas that we can, what are other things that we can do to ensure that we help offset some of the things that are happening? And, and I, I know I would love to have that conversation, and I think our, my colleagues would too. Because I, I do think there are certain things that we may be able to do that we just may not know about. But, but anyhow, just wanted to to say, you know, for the record, that I think all of us believe that fire and police are important, public safety is important. And I think that, you know, the budget that we've put together today reflects that. And so, but, but thank you, Brian, for all of the work. I think, I think that's going to put us at, at a, at a, at a much higher level when it comes to comparing ourselves. And knowing that we're at top 10% within our cities, I think is great, great news. And maybe in the next, you know, six months, getting a briefing from you all to let us know how we're doing in that regard, I think would be really great.
Absolutely. We can do that. And we, we are doing some innovative things for police and fire. We've done quite a lot for police, where we've done lateral transfers. A lot of cities don't do that. And PD, they've been doing that for a while, so we do lateral transfers. We don't, we don't start a new officer that's five years into their burn somewhere else as a rookie. We start them at where they're supposed to be. We recently did that policy change with fire as well, because in the fire force, that's not something that's normally done. And we just feel like that makes sense. If you're, you've been fighting fires and being a paramedic for seven years, we're going to give you credit for that. And we test you, so we know, but we validate that. We bring them over, so when somebody leaves, they're not taking a huge pay cut. Some, some firefighters have done that in the past, where they've left their city and taken a pay cut to be at the very bottom. And vice versa. We've had people that have left us. And they went to another city, whether it's family or whatever the case might be, but they went to another city, had to take a pay cut. We don't do that now, so that's one innovative way. And we do retention bonuses for, by performance, out, out. And Charles has allowed us with a pool of money to be able to differentiate between folks on performance. As well as we do referral bonuses. So hiring. So those are pretty limited, but we do offer those, trying to bring in more folks. Especially if there's an officer or firefighter that's at another city and their friends, because it's a close邻, their community. And hey, we've got an opening. You should come check us out. So.
And it, and it may be nice, sorry, sorry to interrupt. It may be nice to maybe, you know, and it may not have to be a meeting, but just knowing all of those innovative things, like the lateral movements, I didn't know that, right? That, that other cities, I think just having that information as council, when people ask us, we're out in the communities. I think that, that in and of itself will help us kind of just tell a better story when people are saying, you know, why are we down and whatnot? Like, hey, these are all of the things that we're doing. I think we're just, we just, it's a very competitive world out there right now. And so I think that in and of itself, I know it would help me just having that information, like some of the things that you just mentioned, so.
Well, I had an aha moment during this, during the comp study with, with our liaisons. And I have one liaison, he's been here a long, he's been here at one time. He's a great guy, works for our Parks Department. And he said, Brian, many years ago, decades ago, we were the premier city. People left their cities to come and work for us. We had the best benefits, we had the best pay. We had council just love us. And, and it was reflected in council meetings, you know, that, that sort of thing. And I let him go for about 60 seconds, and I'm like, okay, okay. And finally, he stopped, took a breath, and I said, so why do you think that that's not now? You know? I don't know. And I said, well, let me tell you from an HR perspective, why I think it is now. I said, one, council has supported you the entire time, city management has supported you the entire time. Our pay structure is based at 5% above the average. We have had flat benefits, no increase in benefits and costs, which is direct money out of your pocket for the last nine years. We have a react culture. You tell me. He goes, you know what? You're right. We just need to talk more about it. That was an aha moment for me, because we do, we're very limited staff, city management, HR, we're, we're kind of doing the rally flag. And I'm not your typical HR guy. I'm not a touchy-feely HR guy. I'm a business HR guy. And so I, I come across a lot more direct a lot of times. But that's something to really rally the flag around and say, we are that premier city. And, you know, we're not Dallas and we're not Plano. And those are two extremes. But you get a very good deal working here, and you get a great service working here, because we do expect more. You know, we, we open up ice storm events and when everybody's home, so people can come and have shelter, that's this staff. That's the direct line employees that do that, is the park staff. So I think we step up to the plate, and I think you all reward people for stepping up to the plate.
Brian, I just have a, a quick question. I mean, part of my role in, in my practice is HR as well. I wear a lot of different hats. And so the, the job market right now for my industry is insane. I mean, we've, we've operated now for over 19 months at, you know, a 25% reduction in staff. But, but it, not for the lack of warning.
Sure.
So, you know, we've, you know, over the past six months, really looked at what are some creative ways that we can attract? So I'd like, I'd like to know, you know, what y'all are doing as far as attract, in your recruitment area, in, in trying to attract people. Because I'm, I'm sure, as challenging as what mine is, I can't even imagine what police would be.
Sure.
So, so I'd like to see what, you know, I'd like to hear what, what y'all are doing to, to, creative things that y'all are doing to, to look at recruitment in particular. And, and then I just wanted to say that the fact that y'all have stayed for nine years at flat benefits is, I'm so jealous. I can't even stand it. So, because we see on average a 12% increase.
Every year.
Every year. Every year. And so, I mean, it is, it is medical inflation. And I'm a little bit of company, and so, you know, if you've got some secrets, I would like to have a conversation outside this meeting.
I am happy to talk to any council person, and I do have- I am happy to talk to any council person, and I do have recommendations, you just gotta be willing to be bold.
Right, right.
And and believe me, whenever when I meet, I mentioned that meeting that I have with city managers, and I've always mentioned that nine year deal. Because everybody, when you go out in the, when you go out in the room, you hear, oh, you know, we we had to switch from Blue Cross. Because they're having to switch almost every year to keep the cost down. And so you have a huge disruption on benefit packages for your employees. But they're just trying to keep the cost below a fifteen percent or twenty percent increase every year. And and so when they come to me and I say, we we've been nine years flat, everybody goes, oh, you know, tell us your secret, how do you get there? And when I mentioned, you know, we had to make some tough and bold decisions early on, like just offering one plan is a bold decision.
That is.
Uh but now that we've made those decisions early on, and they're ingrained, and people understand, and we've educated people how to use. High deductible plan and health savings account and be a smart consumer, and we've hired a company to help them be a smart consumer and help them navigate. Uh those things made a huge difference, but what I'm finding with the cities is that they don't want to make, and I'm saying every other city. They don't want to make that bold decision. They're afraid to impact their retirees. And and so, but we made the decisions early on, and it it's it's really helped us tremendously. Not just helped employees, but helped the taxpayers and and and.
And retirees.
And and that, yes, and that can be a huge driver of cost increases for the taxpayer is the health insurance benefit for the employees. And so uh it's my, you know, kudos to the whole team here, especially Brian, and in terms of helping us get to a point where we can uh, you know, in. In nine years, and I don't see us in the future needing an increase. We're kind of, you know, one of the things that I mentioned early on about this budget is trying to get us to a point where we're at a sustainable level in terms of pay as you go capital funding. Health insurance, just all of those things that that are drivers of cost increases. We're trying to smooth those out so that we don't have to come back to the taxpayer and say, we need to go up on tax rate. Because now with the state law, it's very difficult to increase taxes. And you have to start going to to the voters, and they have to be able to vote and voice their opinion as to whether or not they want you to go up on taxes. We all know how that's going to end. And so rather than wait to be smacked. It's much easier to control your costs upfront, and so that's that's been our goal, and I think we're right at that point of, it's just a, we're at a sweet spot. And knock on wood, because things could change, something horrible could happen. But at this point, uh we, the the goal is to get to a point where we're not gonna have to go back to the 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 taxpayers and say, we need to increase. And hopefully, we'll be on a a trend towards maybe gradual decreases as time goes on. Uh but I don't see us needing to increase taxes or issue debt, and that's a sweet place to be. Uh it was, John, what what was the city, is it Mansfield? Who was gonna have to go to the voters?
Oh my, it was Mesquite.
Mesquite. Mesquite has to go to the voters, because of because of the state caps, they have to go to the voters to give a raise to their police and fire. Just to make them competitive, and that's a horrible place to be. And it's a horrible place to put the voters, because the voters are having to say, hey, do we want to pay more taxes out of our pocket, or do we want to pay our police and fire? I mean, that's really a tough spot to be, and I and I don't ever want to have.
If it doesn't pass, if you're a police officer or firefighter, your community just voted down.
Yeah.
Your service to their community, how are they gonna feel? When we had some of our toughest times, when we had like a snowbogeyman. You know, we went through that period during COVID where we made a philosophy, we're not going to furlough anybody. We're gonna keep our team working, we're gonna find a way to do that. And for communities that did that, when you had an event like that, our guys were, our team was a hundred percent in. We had people who could not go home to their families, and would literally, they came in, and they kept the community going, because they know the community supported them, and they were. When they needed us the most, the council said, we're gonna stand by our team. If you're Mesquite and you're, you know, you go up and like, I don't want to raise my taxes, I don't care, they'll figure it out, it's voted down. When you have a tough situation, you're not gonna have a police and fire support for it.
I mean, we're, humans are humans, and that's kind of human nature.
Yeah.
We feel supported, even with the management team, if we're not doing, you know, I agree with you, Councilmember. You gotta look at the line employees, any line employee, not this police and fire, but any line employee, because it's a majority over management. If you don't have the right management team in place and the right culture in place, you can pay them scads and money, they're still no.
Yeah.
And it's so that, you you have to balance it out, and and by you all saying, we support you, we support employees, it it means a lot. You also, actually, everybody's new, except for Councilmember, I I think even you earlier knew to this. At one point, none of our employees would kind of be recognized by council for their service kinds. They used to do it routinely, then they stopped, because there was just this feeling of, we're not liked, we're not respected, so why wouldn't we go up there? And now you see the trend of people coming back up to be recognized for y'all.
Well, and I I have to say, um, you know, when I was just reviewing, I think y'all are sitting at, your your budgetary expense on on staff is. Um correct me, I think it's like forty-eight percent, is that right?
Oh, in general.
In general, it's just like forty-eight percent. Um and uh I know for for someone who's not in the service industry or or service sector, that that seems like a a whole lot of your overall budget. Um but but for us, um within my industry, we're service, and we're we're well over fifty-six percent of our budget.
Fifty-five percent in general.
Yeah, and so um so I think I think y'all are doing the right thing, and I can, it's it's real obvious in your budget that that you try to keep everything lean. And and of course, uh with with Charles' constant reminder that we're, he's avoiding adding more staff positions. You know, I think y'all, I think y'all do a really, really good job of of compensating those who work for us. Um and expecting um the highest uh level of uh productivity from those staff members. Um but if you're gonna, you know, if you're gonna run a leadership, it's it's, I think it's great to run a leadership, but but. Your, you know, your compensation has to reflect that that leanness, because you are expecting people to wear multiple hats. You're expecting people to do um above and beyond, you know, a a staff that's that's larger.
Absolutely. You know, part of employees will sometimes say, I'll use Sherrell as an example. How are you comparing Sherrell, who's Director of Finance for Farmers Branch, compared to Director of Finance in Plano?
Which is not even that comparable.
You're not, you're not comparable, you can't compare that.
Well, here's my comment back to him, he said, there's five of Sherrells.
Right, over, well, there's none, there's no Sherrels.
Right, but there's five.
But there's five people.
I said, so that that's why you have to look at those things, that's that's the hard part of the of the compensation too.
Yeah.
And John always tells me, which has stuck with me a long time, I'd rather have a good employee for a week than an average employee for four years. You know, let's let's get the best for our taxpayers, and so that's kind of a philosophy of, we try to take care of you, we want to keep you, but you have to produce.
Right. Well, from an HR standpoint, a budgetary standpoint, I mean, it just makes sense. Um five employees doing something that one employee at three times that pay rate is still a smarter investment.
Absolutely.
So just from a, just from a compensation standpoint, so um so I'm all for it.
Thank you. Anything else?
I'd just like to add, uh kind of echoing some of the comments, uh my hats off to you and the whole city staff. I mean, uh and I was not aware that we held medical costs constant for nine years. I mean, I'm just stunned, because, you know, raging medical expenses is is kind of a given in our in our country.
It is a knownness.
And I mean, yeah, I mean, I I'm just stunned. And back to my point, that I think people move and also stay where they are, not just based on dollars and cents compensation. I think that's an excellent selling point, an excellent recruiting point, you know, because everyone knows the high cost of medicine. And you know, you hear these stories every day, oh, I was hospitalized for that, and I got a bill for, you know, it's just staggering. But I think that's a real competitive advantage for our city to, you know, telegraph that to the marketplace, you know, as we're looking to hire people. Because as you said, those medical costs, you know, almost everyone's, you know, contributions go up every year. And as Charles said, you know, people are changing providers all the time, and that just leads to more turmoil, more time. Well, what do I have, what do I don't have, is this better or worse, and uncertainty. And uh I'm I'm just stunned that, you know, you've held those costs at nine, for nine years.
At at yours, by the way, like, if we can make it to ten, that would be astronomical, so I know we made nine, because we've already, we're already there, but we're hoping for ten, so.
But that goes back to my point, I think, you know, management, leadership, culture are also very important components. To when people really, you know, look at, well, am I gonna have a longer commute, a shorter commute? Well, I'll get two percent, five percent more, but how will that affect other parts of my life and other buckets of my money? And uh I think that's a real competitive advantage in recruiting this and in retaining staff.
Well, thank you. Thank you all.
Sure thing. Um before, Brian, before you leave, I just want to make sure, um I think Mayor Di went on to a ten AM call. But um Councilmember Merritt, do you have any other questions or comments for Brian?
Just just to thank you, Crystal, for the opportunity. And Brian, I'll echo uh the thanks uh for the work that's going in. And I'll also echo the um comments that Crystal has made, that yes, police and fire are terribly, terribly important in our community. And supporting them is of the utmost uh expectation that I bring to the council from my role and as been shared by others. Uh I do want to ask um two two questions, though. One is, if we know that we have an eighteen month lead into new officers. Is is our planning in the HR and police, this may be a a shared question between Chief Hale and yourself, Brian. Of trying to look at that arc over a longer period than just one budgetary year? And and you don't have to answer in total now, if maybe it's more encompassed in Chief Hale's presentation.
So just in general, Councilmember Merritt, it yes, and we do actually do that, that's actually how the recommendation came forth. Last time to you all, or this body, um to put those seven additional officers. So he works with uh Chief Hale and his staff, his his leadership staff, work with me and my staff to come up with that information. Um and it's also what made us start really focusing on a lot more lateral. Um we we've had very success successful um lateral movements recently from other departments to us. Um that's very helpful, because those are officers that can come in and hit the ground running, they're not, there's no time to get acclimated.
No tr- no training, they've already had their training elsewhere.
Yes, sir, other than our culture and and uh our expectations, sure.
Okay, and I think perhaps maybe from my perspective, it's just understanding the longer arc. Instead of just a single year, it's we're training that individual, and in eighteen months, in next year's budget, that person would be a full time officer. And then likewise, we're going to have departures and changes. So it's looking at it more at a two or three year cycle than a a year to year cycle. That's just mine.
Yeah.
Okay, and and maybe there should be some visualizations to to kind of show that numerical number. Which brings you back to my other question, and this echoes uh Crystal's point about telling a good story. While it is um a fact that we're down seven officers, we're not alone in being down seven officers. Or down in the uh police officing uh department. We we see that Dallas is hiring two hundred and fifty. I think if we're able to tell a story that other agencies around in our peer group are also down and know what their numbers are. If seven officers is ten percent or twelve percent of the, you know, Farmers Branch, what are others down? So we can, this is a systemic issue, we've already talked about that, that's been, but it's more factoid based to where we are related to everyone else. I I appreciate numbers in that regard, and that may come from your office or from Chief Hale's, um but I'd appreciate numbers in that space.
We we can certainly gather that data, and I can work with Chief Hale's staff to do that. But but I have, the HR directors tend to provide that readily to me, so I will take the first stab at that, Chief Hale.
Sorry, you might want to go to about the philosophy of over hires that we're starting to do as well.
Sure. Yeah, Ch- Ch- Chief Hale, we are, we are trying to begin an over over hiring process, which is exactly what you were saying, kind of looking at that long term. Uh trajectory and making some recommendations, so Chief Hale has that in his presentation.
Very good. Thank you, thank you both, I appreciate that. Those are my comments, and again, thank you for all the work that goes into the presentations.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember Merritt. Thank you, Brian. All right, so moving on to our next item on the agenda, um as I mentioned, um Mayor's on a call along with um our city manager. So I'm going to go ahead and call up Mark Bentley for our Public Works and Capital Improvement Project's presentation.
Okay, it's my turn. I'm here to, everybody left, so should I just wait? Actually, that's better, everybody just exit the room, and I'll just stand up here by myself for a while.
Do not have, are you, are you gonna head out?
I was gonna go real fast.
Okay, well, we're gonna, we'll take a two minute break, we need a quorum, and we cannot currently have one at the moment. So. Yes, let's do, um, let's take a um a couple minute break, we'll be back at ten ten.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Shane, you're doing, go ahead and resume our meeting. Um Mark, the floor is yours.
I'm here.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Mark Bentley, Director of Public Works, I'm here to present our capital improvement program and our Stormwater Utility Budget for twenty twenty-one. First up is we got our street improvement program, of course, y'all know we've gone, been going through a bond program for the past four or five years. And we're up, we're in our last phase of that, our last year, more than likely, on the on the bond. And currently, right now, we have, you know, almost two million dollars left in the bond fund for street repair. Along with that, council's been generous to increase our street revitalization from a hundred fifty, one point five million dollars to two million this year. So along with that, we got roughly four million dollars that we're gonna be using. We've had some scheduled streets as we show there, but of course, we we try to schedule the streets, but as time goes by, we go out and we actually look at more streets. Just to make sure that the ones we're actually doing are the ones that really need to be repaired. So that always changes, the scope all the way through the bond program, we've we've moved streets around, we've taken streets off, we've added streets to it. So we're really trying to stay on top of what is the best for the citizens, what are the worst streets that we really need to take care of. So projected at this time are the streets you see listed, which is Myra, Keyport, Stardust, Portlock, Oxfordshire, and Joanna. Uh utility replacement improvement. Here, we're we're really thankful to the council for the last couple of years for really giving us some funds that we can go out there and start knocking out some of our uh worst infrastructure. As you all, y'all know that our utility infrastructure is roughly a little over fifty percent of it is almost fifty years old. So we're trying to bring it up just to code today, to improve it, because we are having a lot of issues. A lot of I and I problems, a lot of water main breaks. So right now, our budget is projected at three point one million dollars. And the projects, I've listed a few projects with the dollar amounts, and and what we have is we have a list of approximately seventy projects. That have been built over the last, it's two thousand and ten. And we're just, we've put the worst ones at the top, least ones, we got about seventeen million dollars worth of work on that list. So we're just picking things off the top and just moving down the list, trying to knock them out as fast as we can. Uh we do, we have been moving the FBOB lift station a few years, it's been kind of moving out, it's under design right now. We we did have it slated for last year, however, uh we're going through design, it's not gonna be ready for construction until this next fiscal year. So now it moved to the list for this this next coming fiscal year. So that's gonna be the biggest.
I'm sorry, is that the one on the west side?
That's the one that's right in front of the Sheraton Hotel. It's it's probably, y'all probably don't even know there's one there, because you really don't see it. When we get through it, you're gonna see it, so we're, it's really gonna be something aesthetically, we gotta make it pleasing, because it is right out there. because it is right out there in front on the front road, right in front of the Sheraton.
Thank you.
Um, the I N I, inflow and infiltration reduction. We have been doing a fantastic job with, with the money that the council's been giving us. And we're trying to, you know, decrease our bill to, from T R A to get rid of the I N I problem. And it's been working. So right now, we have 3.3 million dollars. Uh, we've finished pretty much, we're finishing this year, the Rawhide Creek Main Trunk Sewer. Uh, back in 2014, 15, we were, we started on the Farmers Branch, did the creek sewer line. We did the worst part of that. And now we're getting ready to get back on that, complete that main trunk sewer. So that was started roughly at Veronica and go all the way to Ford Road. So, uh, that's slated right now. It's a 24-inch, 24 and 21-inch sewer lines that we're gonna be lining, and that's about 2.8 million dollars. We're gonna continue with our manhole rehab. 57% of our manholes are still brick manholes. And so we're slowly rehabbing that. I think we've, actually that 57% is probably now more like 52 because we've really been working at that the last two years. We've increased that budget $100,000 every, the last two years. So we, we're trying to knock them out as quickly as possible. And then, uh, whatever's listed, we get from the priority list, if we have the money left over, once we get through with those items, then we'll pick some sewer projects off that's the highest on the list and go ahead and do some improvements there. Uh, what you see in this map is just kind of go over a little bit of the drainage. Uh, what you're looking at here are the three major drainage basins. We've got Cook Creek, Cooks Creek on the north. We've got Rawhide in the center and Farmers Branch Creek on the south. This, the blue area you see is the 100-year floodplain. Okay? It just kind of give you an idea of the extent of the floodplain within the city. Um, now what we've done is we broke down how many homes are in the floodplain by drainage basin. So if you look at, uh, Farmers Branch Creek, we have 96 homes that are actually in the floodplain. 15 of those homes are, somehow affect the floodway, which is a real important number. Uh, Rawhide Creek, 45 homes in the floodplain, five homes that affect the floodway. Cooks Creek, floodplain, 90 homes plus 11 apartment buildings that are just right there on the border of Carrollton and, uh, and, and Farmers Branch. 23 homes in Cooks Creek affect the floodway. Now, I, I'll add a little caveat to the Cooks Creek. You know, we are going through, we did get a grant to improve Cooks Creek, uh, from B Street up to Spring Valley. And we are working on that. It is under design. That project is based right now, the tentative, until we get it through and actually verify everything, we will be removing roughly a little over 40 homes from the floodplain, once that project is done. So we're gonna be knocking that number down a little bit on, you know, the floodplain number. And it'll probably be more of the homes that are in the floodway that'll be affected. Because as we decrease the floodplain, the floodway will fall. So any house that's affecting that will probably be the homes that'll be removed. Not, they may not get removed, but they will stop affecting the floodway, put it that way. So we have a total of 231 homes in the floodplain, of which 43 affect the floodway. Our stormwater utility, we created last year a non-bond C I P fund instead of having, well, another, I can't, I don't know all the financial terms, but anyway, being a non-bond C I P. Being a non-bond C I P, what happens with the funds is if we don't use them, it rolls over to the next year. Well, what happened was prior to that, it didn't, it disappeared, it vanished. And I'd like, oh, my gosh, where'd all my money go? You know, so anyway, what am I gonna do next year? So now I have a better picture where I can project into the next year how much money I've got left and how much I'm gonna do. So it gives me a better, uh, tool to be able to go in there and say, okay, here's all the projects that I think I can get done. To start off with, we have one remaining reach within Farmers Branch Creek that needs to be done. And that's reach number two. That's roughly about 800 K. We have, we did a, an assessment of Rawhide Creek from Webb Chapel to Valley View last year. And, um, we came up with what improvements need to be there. The two major ones, which are currently under design, is the bridge improvements at, uh, Webb Chapel and Josie. We've got some major issues there. And so those are gonna be our first projects that we're currently working on that's under design, which we will then have construction in this next fiscal year of roughly about 900 K. Uh, M S Four Consultant, that's an ongoing contract, uh, to help us with our stormwater efforts through the M S Four. That's just 40,000 every year. We just keep rolling that over. Uh, street sweeping and G I S is a constant thing because we're continually doing our street sweeping, doing what we need for, to meet T C Q, T C E Q requirements. And, um, what we're looking at then is, I've added a reach four. We've had an area below Veronica upstream of Josie Bridge that we've had a few homeowners come and say they had some issues. We've looked at it. Uh, we have gotten a proposal from an engineering firm to do a design for, for that reach. It's going to affect probably six homeowners. And that came in at roughly about 200 K. So that's something that will probably be right after the fiscal year will be initiated and we'll get that on the council agenda, get that approved.
Where's that marked?
I'm sorry?
It's Veronica.
Veronica. You know, we're, uh, just north of, or east of those, of Josie Bridge, just upstream from the school.
Yes, 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 yes.
It's in that bend right through there.
Okay.
Okay, before you get to Veronica.
Yep.
That's the Sun Beck Circle.
That's the Sun Beck Circle area. Yeah. Uh, we also have slated, based on my seven-year plan, Mallon Park. Of course, if y'all have driven by Mallon Park, you see it's already silting back up and needs to be dredged again. You know, it's just, it's, it's gonna be one of those things. We're gonna be doing that probably every five years. And the last time we did this was to, basically when I came on board, it was 2014. So it's, it's due. And so I'm trying to fit that in depending on how the budget goes and everything. Yes, sir.
So I have a question, and maybe this goes to Shane also. With respect to like Mallon Park and another area that I'll bring up, uh, does it ever get silted into the point where you worry about stagnant water and mosquitoes?
At this point in time, no. We get to the fireworks and little parts of the water body gets segregated from the rest of it. So it's still a little pond. That's not a concern about mosquitoes. The salt of the water's flowing. There's not a concern about mosquitoes. Predators will eat the, if they do lay eggs, predators will eat them. But the fast-moving water also keeps going. Plus, there's too much of the tuna there usually also.
Okay. Well, then I'll talk to you separately about the second.
Okay.
And I experienced with Farmers Branch Creek, it always flowed. That water moves through there fast. Um.
I, I wanna just piggyback on that. Um, so actually, I just had a, a recent incident regarding mosquitoes in, in my district. And so it may be a good idea, because I wasn't aware of it either, you know, when, when we're able to treat, when we're not able to treat, like if there's walleye there, whatnot, maybe a good idea to notify, maybe in our next newsletter, what have you, to educate our, our members on when we put the traps, why we don't put the traps in areas where there may be ducks and maybe like animals there, certain types of things. Because I know that, especially with the positive cases, I know I've received inquiries. I don't know if you all have. Um, but then also to advise them that we do have, um, also mosquito dunks available to, um, at City Hall. That's something that I know that Ben and I were just talking about. I was not very well versed on some of those nuances when regarding the mosquitoes and when we're able to treat. And I know that, um, that may be helpful for some of our residents that may not know about that as well. Um, so I don't know if we can do that, Shane, um, in, in just some type of communication so that way we can share that, um, uh, through social or through whatever avenues we have with our residents as well. Because I know it's a big, it's a big issue right now.
And the final comment on that is just to, you know, let you know about the Cooks Creek. Uh, of course, that was granted, uh, you know, through T D M, a grant program. And our city match on that is 816,000 dollars for about a 3.2 million dollar project. So that is under, it is, uh, under design. We hope to be able to start construction spring next year. Uh, our funds have already been allocated to the project. We, uh, came in from last year's budget. So we're just moving forward with that project. So next time you, I come to you on that one, that'll be with a, uh, to award a contract. We have to have the, the project completed no later than November 2023. So.
Mark, what was the completion date of that again?
November, well, uh, under the grant regulations, we have to be done by November of 2023. November 18th of 2023, which we should have no problem meeting that schedule.
That's fine. I, I didn't hear if it was 22 or 23. That, that was, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I, I have a question. You said our portion is about a third of that project?
Well, it's actually 25%.
Okay. Well, um, where are we getting the grants from for the other 75%?
It's one grant that, uh, the Texas Department of Emergency Management gave us for a total of 3.2 million dollars. And out of that, it's a 75-25 split.
Is that typical kind of grant that they, they provide? Or was this a special circumstance?
No, it's, it's a typical, the fire department is one who handled that and.
We tried several times and we finally got it awarded. Uh, we tweeted just right till we could get it.
Okay. But so they, they turned it down a couple of times?
We submitted it four times. We got it only four times.
We were eligible, but we weren't math-selected. Uh, we were, and Mark was very happy.
Well, I, yeah, they made me very happy, but I gotta thank, because Lauren Sanchez, she worked her butt off on, on getting that grant. I mean, it finally came down to sitting down with one of the grant people and just saying, what do we gotta do to get this grant?
Yeah. It's almost a special industry.
What word do, what word do we need to change to make it more viable? And that's what she did. And we submitted it and we got it.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to know, you know, where that, those funds were coming from and if that was a special circumstance.
Well, it's not, they have them all the time.
Right.
And, you know, the government, federal government gives the state, and the state puts the money out, you know, with all the, and that came, actually, this one came from Harvey, didn't it? Uh, funds actually were given out. So it goes all the way back to when Harvey came through, you know, the grant funds that went out.
Right.
And, and so we've just been trying to apply to get them.
Yeah. Well, again, job well done.
Oh, any discussion? I, I like to make them short and sweet.
What is that, what is that reach two? What's, where is reach two?
Reach two is the area between, um, Webb Chapel and Valley View. It's a stretch through there. There's about four projects that's in that stretch. And the only, the only reason we did not do that this year, and we're still working on it, was, uh, resident giving us access. We were denied access, so we had to pull the project.
I have one question. Uh, what is the work to be done and what created the problem with the bridges there, I think on Josie and, and Webb Chapel? I was speaking to, I guess, some of the engineers who were out there taking measurements a couple of months ago.
It's just, it's just time. It's just the life expectancy of a, of a structure like that, the, the pounding it takes with water, you know, and everything else. And, and one of the things that they noted and just kind of give you, I, I don't wanna get into all the details on it, but one thing that they did note, and it was interesting that they, that we found this out, was if you're ever going down and, and look on the upstream side, well, actually both sides, uh, of the Josie structure, you'll see there's two sets of culverts. They're side by side, but one is higher than the other by about two feet. Okay? Well, what was happening was, and, and what we're gonna change was that the way the design of the, of the, uh, approach slab that goes into that, it was designed to kick it towards the higher one, not the lower one. So actually, the higher one was taking probably the main flow until it built up enough, and then it went to the lower one. But we're gonna change that because we really want it going through the lower one and let the higher one be the overflow. I mean, that's the way it should have been done, but I think over time, things have settled and keep, so we're gonna try to fix that. So that was one of the things in, in the, in the approach slab on the upper one had failed. And water was shooting down through and starting to try to undermine the structure. And that was the main, my main concern. I did not want that structure to get undermined. But that, that's one of the changes we're gonna make. And so I'm glad we're doing this because didn't even realize that the water was being pushed towards the upper and not the lower. So we're gonna fix that.
Will that work begin this, this calendar year or next?
No, this, this is in, the actual construction work is in next fiscal year.
That's what I thought. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, they're under design right now. So we should be wrapping up the design next couple of months. So we'll be into next year by the time we're ready to go out and bid.
Thanks.
Hey, Mark, do you have an idea? Um, and you may not, just curious, regarding the, when we may be seeing the, um, the contract on the agenda for city council for Cooks Creek?
Cooks Creek, okay, it's currently under design. We, uh, we're working on sections right now. I'm thinking that we probably will see the Cooks Creek construction contract sometime mid-spring.
Okay. Gotcha. Um.
Because, well, there's a lot of other, being a grant, unfortunately, we gotta go through a lot more approval processes to be able to get there. So that's what's also gonna slow it down just a little bit.
For sure. Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions for Mark? Councilmember Merritt?
Yes, thank you, Crystal. Um, Mark, when we had the opportunity along with John Land to visit Brookhaven, we did notice that there were, um, several city, um, drainage, uh, responsibilities there. Are those projects within the 70 projects that you have, you know, in the queue, if you will, I'll use that term, uh, or are those yet to be placed into that? I'm only referring to our responsibilities there.
Okay. Well, the, the, the number of, uh, well, the projects that we saw when we made that, uh, tour around the golf course, those were drainage, not u- utility-related. So they're not on that 70-list project. Those are just water and sewer projects only. Um, no, all those projects we looked at are ones that are new that I've got to try to build into the program. So, um, I know currently, right now, I, I put out for a request for a proposal for a study to be done for that. And, and, you know, we discussed that with golf course to maybe share in that cost, but we're gonna see what that cost is gonna be first. But once we get that, then, once they do that study, those, those are gonna highlight projects that ultimately will either be, some of them may be city-focused, some of them may be golf course-focused. But at that time, until we get that study done and know what kind of needs to be done and how to fix issues, uh, we're probably gonna sit tight, except for some of the, the storm pipe that was exposed. We have a drainage budget item in our general fund for our, any kind of drainage-type work. And we'll probably utilize that, that, that line item to repair some of those pipe issues that we saw.
Okay. So that, that comes out of a different.
That comes out. We did have a general fund drainage number that we use to fix things like that.
Okay. Well, that's fine. You, you've appreciated that. You've addressed the issue I was looking to, to discuss. And you also kindly, uh, augmented the discussion about this proposed study and getting the cost factors for that. So I appreciate that extended. Those are, those are the only questions I had. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just one quick thought, Mark. Um, with the project that's going on with Addison, with the, uh, holding.
Yeah, with the, the, the college pond.
Yes, yeah. Are we, are we anticipating that impacting, um, you know, some of our projects that we, that we have slated, you know, further down the creeks?
Well, it's, it's not gonna impact our projects, but it will have a positive impact on the downstream of the creek. Uh, so we, we are hoping that the way this is all supposed to band out theoretically, you know, it's gonna be a holding. It's gonna slow water down. We're gonna see less flow going downstream. So that's what we're looking for.
Looking for, so are there any of those projects that, that we're hoping we may not have to address because that may create?
No, unfortunately, all the ones we have to address, we're gonna have to address. They're already to a point where we've got, we've got to, yeah, unfortunately.
That's all I have.
Great.
Well, thank you all. Good job.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
We took one. We did. Uh, so next we'll go back, um, and we have Charles with his, uh, staff additions and employee salary adjustments presentation.
Oh, perfect. Excellent. Uh, okay, I'm gonna kind of continue along with, uh, the, the conversation that Brian started about the, uh, the changes to salary. about the, the changes to salary adjustments as well as staffing. The, in the, in the proposed budget, there are nine full-time, brand-new bodies that are being proposed. In police patrol, there are four full-time police officers. Two just added support, and then two are the over-hires. And that gets to what the conversation was earlier, where it takes about 18 months for a new recruit to go through the academy and be actually to a point where they could be on the street, 18 months to two years. Lateral, obviously, is quicker, because they're already, depending on where they're coming from, they're already experienced and don't need that additional training. But the over-hires allows us to kind of get ahead of that, that curve. And also, it acknowledges the fact that just looking down the road, we've had a number of, you know, the kind of, the whole baby boom generation is going through. There's a lot more just retirees in play. And we know that there are a number of employees, specifically in the police department, that more than likely will be retiring in the next couple of years, and so we're kind of trying to get ahead of that. And so that's why the budget includes the request for four full-time officers. Fire prevention, we had a, I believe he was part-time inspector, right? And he, okay, two, two part-time inspectors that have either retired or moved on. And so the recommendation is, especially with us having more businesses to inspect, and the fact that we're getting, with COVID, we got behind on inspections, because that's, in many areas, and especially in fire inspection, the last thing that we wanted to do was to go into a building and potentially expose or be exposed to COVID. And so we've gotten behind. The goal is to have a significant, and you're gonna hear more about the program from Chief Argus, but the goal is to, to have a significant number of businesses inspected annually. And we feel that at this point in time, we really need to have a full-time inspector doing that. Chief Argus is also gonna show there's, there's a cost associated to the business with having that inspection. So there is some degree of an offset, but we're recommended to go to full-time. Animal services, one full-time officer. You know, one thing about more population is, guess what? People come with dogs, and there's some scientific equation as to how many more pets you get based on number of people. And I, quite honestly, I don't know that off the top of my head what that formula is, but my guess is a lot of the folks that are moving on the West Side have pets. And that's translating into more demand for services from our annual services folks. We're also getting a lot of requests for assistance on the weekends, specifically Saturday. And so this would allow us to provide additional services. We're, on an emergency basis, we're essentially available 24/7. But in terms of, you know, just general animal services, we don't have weekend availability. This would allow us to potentially offer some additional assistance on Saturday in addition to meeting the additional demands for the growing population. Human resources, there's a one full-time position requested for an HR coordinator, and that person would be used for recruitment. We've talked about the need to be able to, to go out and do college recruiting or go to, you know, heard that a lot of people are coming, moving from California. Go to California and have someone that's actually out there actively recruiting employees to come to the city would be used for workers' comp management and a number of other areas. But we're to the point where we need, we need some assistance in, in HR. Finance administration, this, Shirelle is right here, and I can answer any questions on this one, but we're asking for one full-time position, and it's kind of a combination of budget and purchasing support. And you might go, well, why do we need more budget and purchasing support? Well, here's the, here's the deal. We have one budget manager right now, and we have one purchasing manager right now. And both those positions are at a point where they could retire today. And so because of that, we feel that we really need to have some degree of an overlap. So while we have the employees here that can provide the training and get someone familiar with their job function, we felt it was important to have a little bit of overlap. If you might remember, we did that with the communications director position, with Tom Bryson and Jeff Brady. So they had a number of months together to provide more of a seamless transition. We think especially for budgeted purchasing support, that it's important to have a seamless transition. That would, we would be really at risk if we just waited until the folks retire, then try and hire someone for a few months. It would, it would cause an interruption in our service levels, so that's the reason behind that one. Innovation and technology, one full-time position. It's a business intelligence analyst. You might go, what the heck is that? Well, you know, over the past few years, we've had a brand-new ERP, Enterprise Resource Program, put in place that are for finance and for planning and for HR. And so that system has been, been put in place, and it creates a huge amount of information. And we, just on a daily operational basis, it works well for us. But in terms of being able to mine that data and come up with really useful reports and analysis of the data, which, when you have a system that is, that's in place that provides for that, you want to be able to use all that data that's being accumulated and to have somebody that can actually design reports, design queries, and be able to make use of all of that information. We feel that a business intelligence analyst is important to that. And we're having departments are demanding the information, councils demanding information, residents are demanding information. And just data and the intelligent use of data is important. We are a very data-driven organization, and so we feel that we're at a point now where it's becoming a critical thing for us to, to have. So those are the positions that are proposed in, in the budget. In terms of salary adjustments, Brian's already talked about a number of these things. I just want to quickly go through and make sure that, you know, we are in a very competitive job market right now, quite obvious. He talked about the major compensation study. He talked about 105% of our starting pay philosophy is continued in this budget. One thing that I don't think he did mention is that we were, in, in the compensation study, we are about one holiday short of what most cities offer. And so rather than pick a new holiday to add, what we're recommending in this budget is to have a floating holiday added so that the employee can determine, we wouldn't close City Hall, and so that wouldn't impact services to residents, but we would allow the employee to decide what would be an important date for them, and they could take that as a floating holiday. Whenever they wanted to, as long as it met the scheduling of their supervisor.
How many do we offer right now?
Nine.
Nine, okay.
So this would add a ninth and a tenth for floating?
In terms of, Brian's already mentioned this about the sworn employees. The, and he mentioned the step increases, about four and a half, well, 400% between the police department, who has seven steps, and 5% between the fire department, who has five steps. So I just want to mention to you that in terms of, if you're within the step system, the, you conceivably, if you're a police officer, you conceivably could have the seven plus the four and a half, so 11.5% increase to your salary come October 1st. So just want to make sure that you're aware that we are, we're really focusing a lot on making sure that, that we have a competitive system for our police and firefighters. Compensation study adjustments throughout, non-sworn. Non-sworn, Brian mentioned about the 0% to 4% merit effective by April 1st. Right now, we have, he talked about the focal evaluation implementation. Right now, folks are, they, if they're eligible for merit, they are eligible on their anniversary date, which is, as you know, throughout, could be throughout the year. And it's that, many folks do it that way, but a lot of the private sector has moved to a focal evaluation implementation. And that's what we're recommending be implemented. That would allow a supervisor to evaluate all the employees around the January, February timeframe with an April 1st implementation. What that allows you to do, it allows you to, that tends to be a little bit slower time of the year. And so it allows supervisors to focus on evaluations. It also allows you to have an easier way of comparing. You know, if you're evaluating your employees all at once, and you're looking at a 0% to 4% merit increase, okay, are you being equitable in terms of who gets the two and a half, and who gets the three, and who gets the four, and who gets the zero? And it's really easy to be able to compare that. In addition, it allows the HR folks to also look at that and say, okay, are there supervisors that are giving all fours when they should be giving on average a two and a half? And to see if there's someone that is rating on the high side of the low, and so we can manage that process as well. So the focal evaluation implementation is, is gonna be a useful tool for us. As part of this, because we've had one full year without any merit increase, and obviously going to April for the focal evaluation, that means there's 18 months where employees would not have had a merit increase. So included in the budget is having a 1% across the board for non-sworn effective October 1st. So that kind of, you know, because there might, there might be people that their anniversary date might be October 1st, so they truly would have had to wait a full 18 months for merit. And so anyway, I just want to kind of tell you a little bit more about the proposed salary adjustments and provide an opportunity for y'all to have any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Charles. Questions?
Yes, I have a question. When you were outlining the nine new positions, one was for animal services, and you mentioned that we're getting, obviously with more people living in Farmer's Branch, a lot more calls, especially on Saturday. But I think you said that we don't have staffing on the weekend? So then are people being called out on overtime right now to handle emergencies?
If it's an emergency, and we only go out on emergencies. An emergency would be like a dangerous animal.
Right.
Something like that.
Right. But adding, adding this new person then would cut back on these unexpected calls, which requires us paying overtime to current...
It would help. It would help, yeah.
It doesn't cut out any of the nightly calls we get, but Saturday for sure. Without failure, they can call it two or three times on a Saturday. We can home else get called back out for something else.
Right, right.
With this employee, would we, could we consider them being more of an on-call Saturday person? Without, that way, it doesn't, it doesn't end in overtime?
Right, because we'd stagger the schedule, so make sure we have officers scheduled for Saturday.
For Saturday, perfect.
We still have weekday on call. We do, we split, but take the second weekend out of the equation, which will be in for staff.
I have a question, Charles, about the, the over-hires. I know there's something that, I know we've talked about regarding just the influx of folks that are coming to the West Side. Is there like a staggered plan to have a couple, you know, I know we have four. We have, two of those are over-hires. Do we have a plan for maybe to, to request, and this may be a question for Chief Hale, and I can definitely wait to ask this later, but do we have a plan to add a few more in the next coming years to ensure that, once the West Side is fully, you know, fully developed, that we already have those people in place? But I would, I would hate for, for it to happen what happened a couple of years ago, where we didn't, you know, we, we had more need, but we didn't have the officers in place to be able to accommodate.
Well, this, currently, we have a full beat in place, right? We have a full beat in place. We had a half beat in place, and this year, we had, we had two new officers, and it provided for the full beat.
Right, we haven't been able to hire them yet, but they were a portion of that in the last budget, so...
Yeah, so that should take care of the West Side, but in terms of the future...
Yeah, the two additional will help us finish that, because it technically takes, I can do it before, but whenever somebody goes on vacation, five is really the, the best number. And so I'll use that, and then I've got a traffic position that I'll back down. But to kind of answer your question, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Charles about this, but as we get, patrol is the backbone of the organization. We have to be able to respond to calls for service. But as the West End does finish out, we're gonna have to go back and start looking at what the workload is on our investigations division, because they're gonna get more cases, or patrol's, you know, making more calls for service. So that's a discussion that we'll have in, in coming years. So yes, it is, it is being thought there.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah. And, and obviously, you know, as we transition from a, I'm trying to figure it out. As we transition from, to a city that has more residents, I mean, that's going to, I mean, it's one thing to have a city that is, has a fairly significant number of commercial, because, you know, there's not a lot of calls for service on the commercial side, especially at night. On the residential side, guess what? There's a lot of night calls, and especially in the apartment community. And so, you know, I've realized that the chief, over time, is, you know, we're gonna have to evolve as to what the type of calls are. And, and so that's, that's something that's constantly, you know, at some point, I, my guess is that those two of our hires will at some point be just two hires. But, but, you know, we're constantly gonna have to evaluate the conditions. And you rightfully pointed out a little while ago about, you know, how can we be smarter about providing both police and fire services to our, to our residents? Because it's not always just bodies. It could be a different way of doing things, a different combination of using different services. You know, I know we've been kind of innovative. The chief has been innovative in the past in, you know, license plate readers and having the stationary readers. And then I know Chief Argus has had, you know, kind of evolving to look at, okay, where are our needs? And that's, you know, that's why, one of the reasons we went to a four-man crew on the West Side is because, guess what? You've got more density, you've got higher buildings. Three firefighters, they're struggling, and so that's why, just on that side, we went to four firefighter crews. And, and so we're constantly evolving, trying to be smarter with what we're doing, but also realizing that it's not always just throwing a body at the problem, that there's, there's smarter ways to do things. And I think both chiefs are very tuned to that and do a great job.
Definitely. Thank you so much. Any other questions? Mayor Dai, councilmember Merrick, do you have any questions for Charles?
Only one from here, and that is, what ERP system are we using?
Tyler, Tyler Technology, and they, in the, in the local governmental world, there's, there used to be a number of options, but there have been a lot of consolidations, as there have in a lot of software fields. But Tyler Technologies is probably the largest one in the United States, and that's who we, we use.
And we would expect this hire to be certified or trained in this particular technology from an ERP standpoint? Or are we just looking at someone that would be able to be trained? I'm just asking the question.
No, 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 no. We, we won't, we need, the desire need is someone that can be up and running immediately. And so the, we would only hire somebody, and we don't have, we don't, quite frankly, don't have the ability to train them. So we would need somebody that, that is proficient in this area to come and start right off the bat.
Understood. Appreciate your follow-up. That's all I had. Thank you so much. No, no questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, thank you, Charles.
Sure.
Okay, moving right along. Next, we have Shane with an EV network update.
I gotta pull it up on that one, put a P drive back home, back in City Hall.
Oh, that's better, but you're on soon for them to see, again, this refusal.
Do you want me to take it off, flash it on, just download it real quick?
Yeah.
Councilmember Merritt, we're just waiting to get connected back up with the presentation, so just give us a moment.
Now we're in another mess.
Thank you.
You can go take a quick swim while you're, while you're waiting.
If it makes you all feel any better, we're thunderstorming and lightning, so.
Oh.
It's clearing off.
Oh, good. At least you're, you know you're not missing out on the fun with the fan.
That's correct, that's correct.
Perfect, all right. Shane? Go ahead.
Mayor, Council, Shane Davis, Director of Sustainability and Public Health. This is the first of two presentations on my part.
Hey Shane, give me one second, I need to make sure that we have quorum. Okay, go ahead.
So the sustainability budget, our big ask this year has to do with electrical vehicle charging stations. This has changed, this, since this presentation was put together. There's been a push now in terms of have electrical vehicles come online even faster. Most of them are trying to push more and more electrical vehicles by twenty thirty-five. Sure, most of y'all seen in terms of trucks, Ford F-150, although they got a different name for it, it's in the works. I looked at an article yesterday, and so actually I probably need to crank the one, it says price of EVs have dropped. Most EVs I'm seeing are targeting upper end market of cars. None of them really cheaper. So unlike the Leaf, a couple of other ones, the EVs are going that direction. Ones I'm seeing that are going to roll out this next year are not lower cost. They're targeting to a higher end demographic. But they do expect strong growth. Most of the companies now are pushing to convert to EV sales up till about twenty thirty. Where at least half the sales will be EVs. Fleets are starting to make that change too. So this is being driven as much by Europe, more so than here. But Amazon, DHL, IKEA, AT&amp;T are starting to convert their fleets away from internal combustion engines over to EVs. So living in Dallas, I realize most of y'all weren't on the council. We had a presentation by Coglaw back, it gave us the twenty forty-five mobility plan, which showed some modeling efforts in terms of air pollution. And Dallas, we don't make a lot of changes, Special Farmer's Branch, right there at intersection six thirty-five and thirty-five. Expect to have a lot of smog in the area, and majority of it comes from tailpipes. One of the benefits EVs offer is the low maintenance costs. So upfront, you're certainly paying more, the maintenance costs compared to internal combustion engine, they are lower. And since you're paying for the cost of electricity, not necessarily petrol, you're feeling costs are typically lower. That varies across the country, depending upon what your electrical rates are. So one of the biggest challenges we face with EV vehicles is, my wife and I both purchased new vehicles recently. We thought long and hard about EVs. We're also planning on making a trip to Colorado. We thought, how much effort are we going to put into planning our trip to get there? Versus just making the straight drive to Colorado. One of the things that's lacking, in my opinion, is the lack of infrastructure. So not knowing where I'm going to be able to charge my vehicle, if I'm out in the more remote parts of Colorado. Can we do that safely and get to the next charging station? So question is chicken and egg, who handles this? Should be private industry, should be the government. We also now got a plan in terms of general public, but also the city's facing the same challenges in terms of purchasing vehicles also. So we need to have infrastructure in place when EVs become the norm in terms of what we have to buy. And so we're starting that process with this coming year, at least our hope is to. And that's for our budget requests we're in here for. We're focusing on the level two chargers. One of the nice things about the charger we're looking at is in time, right now we're, City Hall, we have a charging station out there. There's no charge to residents to use it, and we don't have a way to charge them with that particular charger. The new one we put at the library is the opposite. Right now it's available for residents to use, but when we decide to make that change, we can actually start charging to use that, that charger. So we're trying to, those are the way we go, those are the chargers we use going forward. So some of our requests will be for City Hall, just for city facilities, city vehicles. Others will be made publicly available, going to the same type of charger you see at the library now. It also has a very nice interface that we can lay at, see how much are people using it? Like how long are they staying on the chargers? At some point in time, we may need to regulate the length of time. So some of them occupy the charger for the entire day. If we want to try and get more folks to use it, make it available with more folks, we may have to set limits in terms of the hours they can charge. So I can show up and charge for a couple hours, and then force them off the system. And one of the biggest challenges with EV, for the infrastructure, is getting electricity to where we want the charging stations to be. And so a lot of the costs you see in the budget this year is to get the electricity out to the locations we want them to be at. The chargers themselves are not the biggest cost. Once you get the electricity there, then you can easily increase the number of chargers as time goes on, and more vehicles are needed, or more chargers are needed for more vehicles. So that's why some of these big numbers are in here. It's not necessarily the chargers, it's getting electricity to the point where we can put multiple chargers in that same location. So City Hall, we have some on the West Side, where the City Vehicles Park, but we're also looking at trying to add a couple more for, out in front of City Hall, which could be city vehicles or the general public. The Justice Center is another one we're also targeting, looking to gear up to twelve EVs in the future. Fire Station, the goal is to have in the future enough for six EVs. Community Recreation Center, so this is more the community ones. This one is getting electricity out there toward, we're going to put on Hart Side as the place we've identified. So that's kind of a long run for electricity. Almost all this cost right here is for the electrical, electricity itself versus the chargers. Justice Center, we look at having one port out there, so more from the general public. And City Hall, the same thing. So we're seeing more, the OEMs, that's the big thing we want to see, is the major manufacturers, not just Tesla. They're the biggest seller of EVs at the moment. But we want to start seeing Nissan and other folks have more vehicles to offer for the EVs really start taking off. And with the coming year, the next couple of years, I suspect we'll see a lot more offerings from different electrical manufacturer, or car manufacturers. In terms of sustainability, of course, this is what we're geared for, is more sustainable transportation system. I'm looking at more as much of the public health aspect for the next fifteen to twenty years as anything else. And also we just need to start preparing. You can't wait till the EVs get here and then figure out what do we do? So we're trying to be a little more proactive with this and get infrastructure in place for a city fleet. And then also try and show the general public we're doing this also. But hoping that in time, businesses will take it upon themselves, whether it's apartment complexes, to offer EV stations for their residents. Other businesses that may want to use it as an attraction. Collin Street Bakery, if y'all ever go to those, they all have Tesla charging stations. But certain businesses are, that's kind of their branding too, is they have charging stations at their location. So with that, any questions about the budget request in terms of EV infrastructure? Mr. Terry?
So we're going to invest about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, I was trying to add up, to do this. And other than city vehicles, we will charge, or there will be a charge to use these things? Or are we providing the service free to everybody?
Will probably be free for a little bit, but the new charges, we can implement a fee when we're ready to do that.
And is that a fee just to cover the cost of equipment? Or, I don't know how other people charge for this, or they're kind of like a profit center off of it?
Right, I don't know that we get to a complete profit center. I think our goal would be to just cover our costs, if we can do that in the future. Certainly for the charger itself, but also our kilowatt per hour costs we pay in terms of electricity.
Okay, so if you invest two thirty in the equipment, is that, I mean, that's your fixed cost? But is there ongoing maintenance to these things on an annual basis?
There would be some. We've had very little maintenance, the one at City Hall. So far folks have treated it as nicely. They haven't broken the ports off or anything like that. That's kind of your big thing, is how you actually fuel it and connect it. As long as those connectors are not being broken.
Okay.
That's the biggest one. Otherwise, just ongoing maintenance costs in terms of the software that provides the data we use and also the graphic user interface we build and use.
Okay. Is there any potential liability to the city? Like if somebody plugs in their car and they say, you've shorted out my car, my car doesn't work anymore, or something like that? Or do people use this knowing they're, they're at risk for using a public charger?
Why would you use it at risk? I'm going to look at someone who has one.
I guess, I don't know if that's a valid question or not, I'm just, but I'm thinking about it.
Yeah, I've not heard of anybody having an explosion or sticking their finger.
Right.
And that, that would be something that, I have a feeling that, you know, anybody can sue over anything.
Right.
But I think we have the insurance and the law behind us that we'd be okay. You know, the other thing I want to mention is that the cost to charge a car, an electric car, like from empty to full, is in the neighborhood of about four dollars. So it's not, it's not a whole lot of money in terms of, I mean, those are taxpayer dollars, but for furry, I get that. But the, the other thing to consider is that, one of the nice things about the City Hall location is, guess what? It's a block away from our restaurant park. And these are level two chargers, but they're not what are called fast or superchargers. And so a supercharger, you can get in and out in fifteen to twenty minutes. These, you know, when you're talking twenty-five hours, twenty-five miles per hour equivalent, you're going to need to spend some time doing something, right? If you're trying to fill up. And so guess what? We've got a restaurant park, we've got a grocery store. And so being a little bit strategic is, you know, for folks that are driving on the highway, you know, and we've told the folks in the restaurant park that, you know, that might could be even a selling point, that hey, there's an EV station across the street. Sulphur Springs, which is not in East Texas, that's, John and I have both been there. They, their Chamber of Commerce, they paid for charging stations that you put in right next to their downtown area. So that people will come in, and guess what? They're going to be sitting there for a while. And then, and currently, folks that have electric vehicles generally have a nice amount of discretionary income. So, you know, if they want to have lunch, if they want to have dinner, if they want to, I guess not have a drink would be a bad deal. But the, you know, they have, they can go in frequent places downtown. So there's, there's a degree of strategy here too, on some of the locations.
Well, and I get that, and I'm generally supportive of this. But, you know, as the number of vehicles increase, and more and more people are investing in this kind of a transportation mode, then that four dollar per vehicle could grow considerably and end up being pretty, maybe a pretty sizable number every month.
Correct, we're just going to have to evaluate it. And different cities are taking different approaches to this. Like Austin, of course, they, they own the power company. But, but in Austin, they've looked at, they feel it's government's role to put out, have stations for folks throughout the city. And, and we're like, okay, at some point, the private sector is going to kick in. Because like at Walgreens, I think they have them, and different places have them. But at some point, the private sector will have a better network. But our approach is that, you know, at a minimum, we felt it was important for city facilities, definitely for city vehicles, to expand that network, but also provide some opportunity for, for the public. Because I think it, overall, because it's not been that long ago that we had the non attainment days where we had to, you know, we.
There was one that left, the Orange Day.
The feds were essentially saying, okay, all the businesses in town have to, you know, go to flex scheduling of their employees, and only certain employees can come in, essential employees could come in certain day. So, you know, that's disruptive for private sector as well as government. And so if we can avoid that and help to, maybe a tiny degree by extending this network to our public, then anything we can do, I think, is important to try and, and, and help with getting our climate down, or our atmosphere down to a reasonable, breathable level.
I would like to echo that as well. And I really appreciate the fact that y'all aren't charging right now, while our community and, and our country as a whole is trying to transition us into a zero emissions situation that's, you know, anytime that we have that kind of a transition, it's painful. In any way that on a local government level, we can offset that, some of that initial hesitation and be more encouraging. You know, if we're looking at huge amounts of cost, but when you're looking at, you know, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars of an initial investment in a hundred and thirty-seven million dollar budget, that's a really small portion of our budget that, that really helps our community. I like the optic of it, and I think it encourages our community members and, and really helps to, you know, for us being a city and a park, that can't just be, oh, we've got lots of green park spaces. We have to be more green centered as well. And so I think from the sustainability, you know, not charging right now, I think is the better way to go.
Yeah, and I don't think Shane mentioned it, but the, you know, we are actively, there's a number of grants that are available from both the private and the public sector. And so we're actively trying to see if we can get those as well to assist with the cost, so.
For the library one, as the case, we have a grant for the library charging. It didn't cover the whole cost, but it covered part of it. We see him, we're flying.
Love that.
Charles is on target. August eighteenth, we're going to have a meeting to see if we can be some funding for charging stations too as well. And Luke will be on there, and we'll pass it to Alex too as well, if you want to attend. So we'll see how communities can get that funding. It's meant to help one, and also a network too, to be on site. You can see, the customer can see where are all the charges, and like, like your point, you put somewhere where they want to spend some money in our restaurants.
That was actually going to be one of my, one of my questions, is if we were going to have some type of map network on our website to be able to show, to be able to show where they are in, in our city? Because that way, I think it'd be a great tool for, to your point, even our chambers, to say, hey, by the way, this is our network. So in case you have employees, if you have folks that are visiting, our hotels can have them too. I think it'd be a great opportunity for us. And so, so anyways, just throwing that out there. I did have a question when it comes to, you know, economic development and any, especially looking at what we're doing in, around the dark station. Are we able, and this would be a Tina question, but are we able to add mechanisms to say, for any new development, you know, can we add these EV stations as part of it, because of the fact that we know that it'd help with incentivizing, you know, retailers to come? It'll help with our economic development, bring folks in. But also, I think it'd be a great opportunity for the developer to be able to make, you know, make the case to be able to get some of those really new and interesting, you know, retailers or whatnot in our area. Is that something that we're able to do? Provide or request, you know, that any, you know, new development, see if they would be willing to add EV stations as part of the development? I'm looking at things like the, what we're doing at the boardwalk, that may be something that we could talk to the developer about, or things like that. At the very onset, so it's easier when they're building as opposed to having a retrofit and bringing it back in?
What I'm seeing, I mean, as an owner of an electric vehicle, that, what I'm seeing is, is that the private sector is pretty remarkable about responding to demand. And so I see a number of times where, like new hotels, it's pretty common to have an EV station. We have surprising number of businesses in Farmer's Branch that offer it for their employees or their customers. The, the map, I. The map is useful, but if as an EV owner, you've, it's called an app. There's ChargePoint and PlugShare. And you just, if you're looking for a spot, you just have where you are, where you're going. And it shows all of them and you can punch and see how much they charge or if they charge. And there's also a little Yelp review, like. I've been trying to be real good about making sure that the City Hall has good reviews.
Oh, gotcha, yeah, yeah, yeah. As a non-electric car owner, it's not a weird.
That's what we use in the, and I made sure on the City Hall review because users to the apps could go in and make remarks. And I made sure I put in, you know, right near our grocery store, delicious restaurants.
Sure, and so, that way, so that means that we, on all of our, all of our charging stations, we are adding ourselves to those networks.
Well, it's ChargePoint is the vendor we're using. And that's the largest vendor in the United States.
Perfect, okay. See, I'm learning so much today. Sorry, Councilwoman Merritt, you had something to add? Sorry about that.
Well, no, you were going down that avenue, thank you very much, Crystal. But making sure that we contribute to that app system. It sounds though, if we're using, if we're acquiring a product from, I believe, ChargePoint, that they would map us on their app, is that what I'm hearing correctly?
When they install it, they map it.
Yeah, when they install it, they map it.
Okay, that's fantastic to know. One other, as a non-owning EV individual, are they ubiquitous from a perspective of if I have a Ford or you have a Tesla, that the charging is going to be the same?
Yeah, the Ford, for Tesla's the only one that has a unique port, but then there's an adapter for the Tesla that allows them to use. I think it's a JL 122 or something like that. But that's a, but the connector, the connector for everybody else is ubiquitous.
And so, do you carry your adapter with you, Charles? I mean, is that, if you had a Tesla, do you have that with you?
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Because remember, I have to have a cord with me that, because I can go 110, I can do like a dryer plug. I mean, so, most folks can do multiple connectors and they carry with them. Because you don't want to be without a charge.
That's fine. And the other point that I want to make, a number of, a number of these ports that we're putting in are going to be addressing our city fleet. So, is that correct?
That is correct. And since current and future, predominantly future.
Right, so that goes back to the discussion. And I'm totally on board with Terry's perspective of making sure that we ultimately charge, you know, appropriate amount to cover some costs. But this is the cost the city is actually incurring, excuse me, for our city fleet. So, I think that's, there's a balance that needs to be struck. So, I think it's more weighted to the city at the moment with the rollover or expansion of a Venn diagram, if you will, to the benefit to the community as well. So, okay, thank you for the update.
Great. I might just add, and it's probably better for Ms. Brady's team, but like anytime we do something like this, where we've got a new station that goes in, just from a, just from a, like a marketing standpoint, if the council could be provided with a graphic and just a little quick blur so that we can share that on our social media. And just to throw that in as, like anything like that, not just, not just the EV stuff, but any of those positive things. Because I think that just goes back to that whole conversation of, you know, there's a lot of services that the city offers that the public is not aware because they're not visiting the website or they're not reading their newsletter or what have you. And so, if we can make sure that that just becomes part of our best practice, that, you know, we push those little quick graphics, those quick little blurbs, you know, out to, you know, out to council so that we can then show, you know, share that on our social media pages. And I think that'll help to go back to that whole communications thing and the whole idea, you know.
Sharing the right story.
Yeah, sharing those right stories and those positive stories. And making sure that the, you know, that the citizens know that there are, you know, sustainability practices going on, there's sustainability focus that's happening and maybe they just didn't see it, so.
It's a great idea.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Shane, are you aware in the metroplex or in Texas of other municipalities that are much further down the road in developing EV strategies?
It sort of sounds like Austin for sure is. Some cities have chosen not to, there's an article out back, clearly opted not to. There's the same grant we applied for. They're looking for something to pay for the entire cost of the charger instead of just part of it. But with the push, with the manufacturers converting fleets or options to EVs, you're gonna have to make the choice here pretty quick to start putting in infrastructure.
But are there any cities in the metroplex, the greater metroplex here that are a lot further down this road and building the infrastructure?
Then I'm not sure if that's Kevin Menchaus, if his partner is on the fleet side, have a better idea in terms of electrifying their own fleets. I assume Plano's probably got some, I've seen some, just I used to spend some time with Plano driving around.
Yeah, a number of cities in the metroplex may have more, because we really have one. It's a city vehicle. They may have more vehicles, but the charging stations, they're charging the infrastructure, the network, is going to be limited to wherever that, those vehicles are. And they may be like melee code enforcement or for those functions that blend themselves a little bit easier to EV vehicles. But in terms of, and this is a pretty bold strategy in terms of extending that network essentially to every city facility. I think it's, I think it's, this is the first I've heard of it. And, you know, ultimately, I think that more and more folks are gonna have to move that route as we move to more and more vehicles being produced that way. So, I think you're gonna see a lot of pure moral about this, but it seemed like it just was the right time for us. And quite frankly, you know, it's one thing to be a city of 12 square miles. That, you know, that's manageable in terms of like a Plano or Dallas or Irving. That becomes, it extrapolates.
Again, a competitive advantage.
Right.
And it's easier for us to, you know, strategically locate these at city facilities to, you know, it's not like everyone's got to go to City Hall or in one particular area of a larger city. And I think that gives us advantages in experimenting with things as well. And I think this is very good, what we're doing. And are there plans down the road as, you know, more electrical vehicles are available and they're being developed rapidly, that we then have charging stations, say, at our service center?
Yes, we're putting that there eventually. Most of the costs you're seeing, especially on the community side, is getting electricity to places. And so, it's gonna be on the city facility too. Then after that, once electricity is there, we can easily add, I'll say, an innumerable number. We can increase the number of charging stations dramatically. It's getting electricity to the point where we can line up a number of charging stations in the future. That's our biggest challenge right now is just getting electricity to the ideal spot for ultimately putting in more charging stations as the fleet grows.
Yeah, and much for teaching about it, like the library, I don't know if you remember, but on, just on the other side of that charging station is essentially the electric switch for that whole neighborhood. And so, it was like literally extending that much of an extension. And so, you know, because that's a 220 line, so it's, it's expensive. It's a thick cable and so, it's expensive to have very long. And so, you know, wherever we can be strategic and make sure that we're located near the actual source is helpful.
So, your costs there were for equipment only, not installation?
Well, most of it's running electric lines to it. Some of the places do have charging stations that go along with it. There's a couple of them out there, we're just trying to get the electricity to that point. Probably next year, we just ask for the charging stations.
Were you responsible for that?
Yes, at our facilities, yes, sir.
I have a question. How many do we have at the library right now? Just one?
Just one, so it's got two places to charge, but it's one charging station.
And I know we haven't had it available there long, but do you have any data on, you know, month-over-month usage?
Alex would have that, I can get that for you all and give it to you as far as what's been used.
Yeah, I'd be curious just to see, you know, how that's being adapted or not.
Yeah, because it's a charge point, we got a lot of.
Maybe we need to do a better job again in just communicating that as, you know, things are changing. And I have a question also for Chief Argus. I know, you know, the trucking industry is working on EV-powered, you know, big rigs and trucking. Are there any fire departments in the country that you're aware of?
Last year, no.
But is it something some of the departments are looking at, having EV-powered?
There has been no talk within that in our much place about that.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Just curious.
Shane, go ahead.
What Charles was saying, hotels and stuff, our west side, you know, we built a couple of new hotels. They all have charging stations. But we're also seeing the other developments throughout the entire city, especially apartment complexes are putting these in there for the residents. So, I think it's starting to grow.
The culture.
So, we're seeing that as we do our inspections.
Yeah, the Scott Center actually recently.
Oh, that's good to know.
That's awesome.
That's good. My only last question, Shane, is if you, do you have a timeline of when we would start for these new ones that we'll be installing? When will be start? When will we start charging for them? Do you have a timeline for that?
Don't.
Okay, okay, sounds good. But I'm assuming when you do, you'll kind of give us an idea of how much has been used and all the costs from, okay, perfect.
My guess is we get the new charge points, we can see how people are using it. If it's one person occupying the charger all the time, well, at that point in time, we're starting to limit the time a person can use it.
Yeah, it'll be demand-based.
It can't be their, Crystal's charging station.
And the ones we have in the city right now, they are available 24/7?
They are.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, and part of that, like, I'll give you an example, because I was like, eh. But one of the reviews on the City Hall was, this one guy said, "Oh, love it, it's great." He said, "I dropped my car off in the morning and I took Dart home and then I came back and picked up the car in the evening and I went, ooh, if I see many more of those, I'm gonna start thinking we're gonna charge."
Dart should do it. We should ask Mayor to tell Dart to add some charging stations in their dark parking lot. Perfect, Shane. And I think, Shane, you have another presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
Landfill closure funding?
Yes, ma'am. Camera's still being shared?
Yes.
Okay. So, I assume all of y'all know, I know not all of y'all have been there yet, but we own a landfill. We don't operate it anymore, we own it.
What? Are you graphics telling that?
So, closure, post-closure, this is a liability thing all municipal or landfill operators have to have. What this is to prevent is we decide, hey, we're done with the landfill, we're walking away. This is too much cost for us, we're out. TCQ, y'all figure it out. You have to set aside money to cover that. If you're to walk away from this, they can bring third parties in to cover the cost to close it and monitor it for 30 years after you close it. That's the requirement, you have 30 years of post-closure. For us, we also have corrective action. The landfill was built in the early 80s. In the early 90s, new regulations came on board, which changed the liner construction. So, at the time, we built our landfill in accordance with the regulations at that time. So, we use a very thick all-clay liner. But those of y'all living in North Texas, you know clay does over time when you have droughts. It doesn't necessarily stay together. It's been a little bit, some gas has gotten out over time. That's what's called, if you've got a landfill, and I hear you talk about pre-subtitle D versus subtitle D, the pre-subtitle D was prior to that regulation. But all of this is why you have financial assurance also, is to clean that up. We have what's called a Type 1 municipal saw waste landfill. That's the most common type of landfill. There's construction demolition ones, there's hazardous waste landfills. We have a Type 1. Those also don't notice a little history. Ours is right next to a very large landfill that everybody sees. When you drive up 35, people think that's our landfill. And that's a waste management owned landfill called the VFW landfill. It is closing for all intensive purposes at the end of this calendar year. When it comes to closure, private industries in the city, you'll have to make this choice 20, 25 years down the road. You don't necessarily close it all in one year, that's a huge cost. So, what they'll do is they'll basically just take a load or two, the minimum they have to, each month or each quarter. And then they'll slowly close the site 50 to 100 acres at a time. If they can handle it from a cash flow basis, it's much easier versus doing one big closure. So, which will see.
What's up, girl? Ragging wagon?
That's the mayor.
Mayor Dyke?
Tell him to mute.
That landfill is gonna be closing. And so, we will kind of be the only landfill in the area. And much like real estate, landfills a lot based on your location. People are only gonna drive so far, especially as the economy recovers and traffic is back to what it was pre-COVID. Getting a large trash truck across the metroplex is not an easy task and it's very costly because of the low miles per gallon. So, with people landfill, it's essentially a 3D warehouse. You don't see a structure on the outside of it, but you have a, in our permit, if you want to look at it, it tells you how, what the slope's gonna be, what your maximum height is at each place. So, it's essentially a 3D warehouse. Your job is to pack as much trash in that 3D warehouses as you can. And once it's full, you're done, you're out of the landfill business. Once you get to that point, you then have to do what's called closure, which means you have to put a bunch of soil down, also cover it up with the plastic liner, and then put more soil on top of that, get grass established, as well as make sure you got a gas collection system across your entire site if you haven't done so already. Those are kind of the big items, there's more to it than that. Then you have 30 years, you have to go out and monitor it and look for erosions. If you have erosion, you gotta go out and fix it. You still have to continue to monitor groundwater, gas production, is there any gas migration, stormwater? You've got 30 years of that. And in our case, continue to work on remedying the groundwater. We're at the very parts per billion level. If you want to know more detail about it, I can tell you what are, what the two or three VOCs we have out there are. But they are trending downward. So, hopefully by the time we get to the end, corrective action is gone, the rate we're going. So, how much does financial assurance cost if you're to walk away? This is your price tag. So, this is based on the number of acres you got to open. So, how many acres you got to open, you have to enclose all those. Plus, you got your 30 years of post-closure maintenance monitoring, plus the cost to charge a third party to come in and take care of the groundwater. So, at this point in time, this is based on our last to middle to TCQ. It's $35 million price tag at the moment. One of your biggest costs in this is closure. And here in the near future, we're bringing a contract amendment back to you from Republic Services. Within closure, one of your biggest costs is soil. We're at a soil, it's called a soil deficit. We don't have enough soil out there to close the site. So, between now and whenever we do close it, I'm trying to incentivize Republic to find dirt and bring it in. Otherwise, guess who's paying the bill for all that soil when we close? This is the city. So, anything I can do to get that amount of soil we need when it comes time for closing is gonna benefit the city in the long run. Because once folks know you need soil, it's no longer free. Now, you're gonna pay a premium to bring, to pay for the soil plus the trucking cost. And so, I'm trying to minimize that as much as I can for the city. So, when we get to the contract note Republic, I'll explain that again in more detail. But know that I'm working on that, the contract amendment, to incentivize them throughout the contract to bring in soil. We have not put anything in the closure, post-closure fund in a long time. We've been using it to pay for the expansion. We've also been using it to expand the landfill gas collection system, which is now a requirement because of the landfill expansion we got approved in 2018. So, that fund's getting a little low. So, as the revenue goes up from the landfill, we want to start taking some of that money, putting it into closure, post-closures. So, you have the time value of money over time to increase what's in there. And so, this year, we have the ask of $1 million is being put into the closure, post-closure fund from the landfill revenue. And it's to start building this fund back up. So, in 20 to 25 years from now, when we do close it, you have the funds available to do that without going and issuing debt. We're trying, ideally, so you're not like, we don't want to see you have to do that. Questions about financial assurance and the landfill?
I think, oh, go ahead, Terry.
Okay, so for five years, I've been harping on this. This is one of the biggest liabilities that's facing the city. And I really feel like our back's up against the wall. We don't have enough money in the fund, obviously, today. We own the landfill, but the catch-22 is if we take more stuff in from our clients' cities, then that reduces the amount of opportunity for us to use our own landfill over time. So, the challenge is how much can we push to market to raise rates? And at the same time, reduce the amount of material that we're taking from other cities or that we're allowing to be dumped in there? This landfill needs to serve farmer's ranch first, in my estimation.
It's doing that through financial cash flow. If you reduce it just to farmer's ranch, your cash flow goes down, so that's a concern.
That's.
Right, it's the balance.
That's the balance. You know, I believe last year. You know, I believe last year, I, or two years ago when we were here, we had 24 years estimated. I don't know if that's still a good number or not, but.
It's fair.
Okay, e- e- even if that's a fair number, and let's say we're adding at least a million dollars a year. And let's just be conservative, say 20 years, so that's 20. And then hopefully with, um, our limited investment vehicle to save that money. I'm not sure that that will get us to 35, because 35's gonna, well, you, you figured in time value money.
Right, so this one million, what we expect over time, what Terry just brought up is very true. Once the FFW landfill closes, now we are pretty much the only landfill out there and the ability to raise rates becomes a lot easier. And Republic is, they're stepping that up now. Uh, if you look at overall revenue, there's things we're taking in like soil, it is much cheaper, just cause it doesn't take much for them to handle soil, it's a, it's a dozer. There's nothing else they need to do when they take soil in. But we need soil, we're to close our, or cover other trash at the end of the day, um, for intermediate cover, so. We need soil too, so we can't just ignore that. But it is starting to go up incremental, slowly. Once the FFW landfill closes, we expect to start seeing that number start stepping up pretty significantly. Which means you're going to have the ability, hopefully, to put a lot more money into the county versus the union. Cause they're allowed to increase like 5% each year, the amount they've taken in the previous year, um, starting from when we initially signed the contract. So there's a cap in terms of how much they can take in there. And ideally, if you went to the cap completely, they'd be taking in 10,000 tons per day, which is, that's LA landfill. City of LA has some really big landfills, you're running 10 compacters. Not really young, new landfills, you, I don't know what a compacter looks like. That's a lot of equipment to have out there pushing trash. Um, right now, we use two, three on a daily basis at a given time. I don't know if the staff really wants to get that much bigger, they can handle some more growth in terms of the staff they have now, but they have no desire really to go to 10,000 ton per day landfill, which is a huge landfill. We can easily find that much volume, very easily, which we then turn around and fill it up in a matter of 10 years, if we did something to that effect.
But Shane, I think, I think it's important to mention that, you know, when we came at the council, I think it wasn't last year, it was the year before, we actually, we put together a long-term pro forma on, uh, on the landfill and, and quite frankly, the million dollars we're proposing for next year, it's kind of in keeping with that pro forma. Cause we always said that once, once the, the competition.
Right.
Is gone, uh, that we would start ramping up rates. And we told, uh, and, and, and quite frankly, uh, Republic wanted to know kind of what our strategy is. Do, did we want to just take up a lot of volume and get a lot of cash upfront and then just we tap the cash? Cause that is an option, we could fill it up in a couple of years.
Okay.
And just have a, a mound of the cash and just use that cash to offset, to help pay for the closure as well as, uh, uh, pay for, uh, the continued, uh, free service to our residents. Uh, so we looked at that and we said, that, that's not our strategy, our strategy is we want this, we, we'd like to have that landfill as long as we can. And we really don't care what you charge people coming in. If you want to, you know, you're the monopoly now, if you want to charge whatever it takes to keep the existing volume or maybe a little bit more, do it. And so they've started that process and so we're in keeping with the pro forma in, in starting this million dollars per year. It does show that over time, uh, it starts, uh, you know, the, we're, we're essentially at a point where, uh, additional revenue growth in the landfill won't go in the general fund, it's going to go in this fund. And so it, we, it, the pro forma shows it gradually going up, uh, until the, at the end of the expected life. And if you remember, and I know it's been a couple of years, but the, the pro forma showed that even at the end of life, you would not only have money set aside to cover closure and post closure, but you'd have tens of millions of dollars extra to use for whatever council wishes to use it for as well. So that's, that's all factored in along with the projected growth, so.
So, you know, I'm done in May. This is going to be one of the biggest things that you all need to focus on or keep top of mind, uh, as you continue your service. Because the, obviously the potential liability to the city is huge. But with closure also comes the fact, what do we do with all our stuff? And it's going to have to be hauled someplace. And when we start trucking our garbage, if we have to go to Wilmer or Hutchins or Dallas, even McComas, there's an expense involved with that. And is that an expense that gets passed, passed on to the taxpayers? Or is there some other, uh, method or means to offset that expense? That could, that could be very significant, you know, maybe 40, 60 dollars a month, depending.
It sounds like we're, we're kind of pre-planning for that. And by having those tens of millions of dollars set aside, then council at that time will have the opportunity to say, we're going to use this fund to help extend our free service to our community.
Or, or use for something else to start charging, that would be up for a future council to decide.
So that's why I'm saying, you all need to decide that because the, the liability to the, or the potential liability to the residents could be very expensive on a monthly basis. So it's going to be up to you all to make sure that those new people coming on council every year are buying into whatever the strategy is that you all have decided.
Yeah, no, I agree, and one of the things I was going to say at the very beginning is that it may be a good idea to, um, just to have that recap of what we discussed a couple of years ago. Cause I think that was when I, that was one of my first budget meetings. And so I think that's, that's when, when you stagger years, sometimes that happens to where you're not privy to some of the history. And so I think it may be a good idea to bring it back. So our new council members can figure, just can know for sure what, um, cause we, we have been planning for the future and so what that looks like. Um, and then maybe make sure that we kind of do that every couple of years, just to make sure that we're able to, um, advise not only our council, but even our community, our newer residents about what's going on as well. Um, so that would be my recommendation, but I agree with you to, um, Councilmember Lynn, I do think it's, it's very important and we need to figure out. And, and that's one of my, you know, um, my questions too is, you know, since, since we had that discussion, you know, has anything changed related to what we're going to do after we close our landfill? Um, what are our options and are there any new options that have come about? And so, so anyways, I would love for us to have that discussion, um, to have that, you know, just a summary of what's been going on.
That's what I mentioned, the soil thing, cause to me, that's my biggest concern, I look at this, if I can reduce the cost to the city in the future, it's how do I get your soil, not you have to buy in the future, down as low as possible before we get to that point in time.
Yeah, and, and one thing that, I mean, if I put the sustainability hat on Shane, the, the, one of the thought, you know, over the next 25 years, is something going to change with how we handle waste? Is, are we going to go to zero waste, are we going to change our habits? I would argue probably not a whole lot, but, uh, independently with, with Amazon, we're actually probably using more waste with those boxes. But, uh, uh, but there, there, a lot of things can happen in terms of, uh, consumer habits and packaging and that kind of thing. So that, that, we've not, we've not really even contemplated that in the pro forma, but, uh, but that is something that's being discussed in a lot of communities about going to a zero waste environment.
And something that are sustainable, and, and, and something that we could do is, you know, with our stability committee, that may be a good opportunity to have a joint meeting with them to have the discussion about our landfill too, cause I'm sure they would want to know kind of what's going on. And getting, having them there, they can be able to give us insights and be able to start looking at opportunities on how to kind of maybe help change some of those habits and, and look at opportunities that we may be able to have in the future. Um, Mayor Di, sorry about that, I, I think I heard you.
Yeah, what I was going to say is, I'm already starting to have conversations with several members. Cities are, you know, their waste is coming to our landfill, about ways that we can partner on working towards zero waste, that diversion. Uh, and other things to link in the, not only the life of our landfill, but how can we partner together to start working collectively as a larger community towards zero waste? Uh, and, and what does that look like and what do these cities need to do? So, you know, a lot of that stuff is starting, um, and Terry, I promise it is, uh, a focus of all of us going forward, um, you know, because we, we hear the charge, we understand what our potential options are, especially as Dallas continues to be, you know, continue to just grow out, you know, where, where's our waste going to go? What landfills are available, where's the next one? Uh, and if it's not the next one, it's too far away, what do we do here locally to, to make sure that, you know, that's taken care of and done so in a responsible way? So, you know, like I said, conversations are being had, um, which I would hope will come forward sooner or later. Conversations that will include our sustainability committee, um, include Shane and a bunch of other people, but also several cities, because it shouldn't all be just on one city. Uh, I think it's multiple cities coming together since we all typically use each other's landfills in some capacity.
And a project near and dear to your heart, Terry, I, I see it happening at some point in time in the future, so Terry's been championing a mulching operation of landfill for quite a while now. Dallas had made a proposal this time, I assume you saw the Dallas one, we want to change service to do what we're doing here in farmer's ranch essentially. Although their bulk will be once a quarter, not once a month, but their point is they're trying to get the brush out of their waste stream and divert it.
That's probably the biggest.
It is.
Area that, I mean, cause it's, it's silly to fill up our landfill with, with brush.
It's reused.
But, you know, I talked about, you know, cities sometimes have trouble making difficult decisions, and we were talking about in health insurance, for example. Uh, but, you know, we, we made, this council made a decision to have to separate bulk and brush. And, and there were people that were concerned, and I think we've kind of gotten somewhat past that. But it, it's made a significant difference when we can have of the, you know, three out of the four hauls out of the month, uh, we're just doing brush, cause that can, that all goes to be mulched. And these, these cities, and I'm already hearing from cities that come to our landfill and their city managers are going, hey, can, you know, Republic, me and Republic is charging a lot, can we do a separate deal directly with you? And I'm going, no, it all goes to Republic. And, and, cause what's going to happen is these cities renegotiate their long-term residential hauling contracts. What's happening is they're, they're seeing the impact of increased tipping fees from our landfill and it has a dramatic impact on the residential rates. That they're going to have to go and say, hey residents, your rates are going up 20, 30, 40, 50%. And, uh, you know, and, and, and they can choose to go ahead and pay that. Uh, or they can make the decision to, hey, if we will make a harder decision to do that separation of brush and bulky, we can, we can have an avenue to keep the, the cost increase down. And so I think that the, the, kind of the supply and demand of the marketplace is going to, to assist with that. Uh, but, uh, but that, that is one option, and that, that's one thing I know that the mayor's been talking to other mayors about. But, you know, if they're looking for relief, that's where I would suggest it be, because again, it's, it's just silly filling up a landfill with brush. It doesn't make sense and, and there's, there is a solution out there.
Yeah, probably the biggest thing just for recently in terms of the solid waste market here. Essentially, waste management sold all their operations in Dallas to Republic, Republic operates our landfill. Republic sold all their awesome operations to Waste Management. So you've had a consolidation in terms of who provides most of the garbage service in Dallas and in Austin. And which, in our case, should work for our benefit, cause it's companies operating our landfill, so.
Is that still tied up in, in the reports?
I'm sorry, if you notice, there's not many green trucks on the street anymore. It's one of the national accounts they have to service with the waste management vehicle, everything else through public.
Maybe in 20 years, we'll be at zero waste and we'll be converting that to electric energy to run our automobiles and trucks.
For those that don't know, just terms of the landfill, we do take our landfill gas and make electricity with it at the moment.
We do?
We've been doing that for quite a while.
Okay, I didn't know that.
What was that?
We take the landfill gas, our landfill we collect, and most of it continues to make electricity.
Oh, right, we're already doing that, I didn't realize.
And I think technology in the private sector, uh, you know, a lot's going to change in the next 10, 20 years.
Okay.
All right, any question, any other questions for Shane? Okay, all right.
David, I think David might.
David, did you happen to?
No, I was just saying, thank.
Okay.
Just saying, thank you.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so next, um, we have public safety slated, however, we're already almost at lunchtime. So what we're going to do is we're going to move public safety to 1:00, so that'll be the first presentation after lunch. So we'll go ahead and adjourn for lunch at 11:48, take a, a couple of minute break and then noon, um, we'll have lunch at noon in the dining room. Perfect, thank you all.